Sir. And here he is. Listen.
Can you hear me okay? Take that as a no. While you're muted, you can hear me unmute and say yes.
Yeah, I can hear you Jim.
Okay, very good, thanks.
How are y'all set?
All right, let's call the meeting to order please. Josh and I are going to be excused. Mike will be seated in his place. First item on the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes for May 22, 2024. Does anyone have anything?
Line 187. Can we say, B W Robinson reads from the South Peak Water Tank Agreement. Cross out literature.
Okay, so it should be read from the South Peak Water Storage Tank Requirements?
Agreement.
Okay.
Regarding the South Peak Water Storage Tank Requirements. I was reading from the.
Hey Jim, who's ever speaking their microphone must not be on.
It's it's great. Can you hear me now?
Try again.
Can you hear me now?
Jeff, real faintly, LJ.
Six.
Buy another battery.
How about that?
That's better.
All right. So the sentence will read, B W Robinson reads from the South Peak Water Tank Agreement regarding the South Peak Water Storage Tank Requirements. Going on additionally future and additional development, et cetera.
Bill's not here. I need to, which is, I guess.
Okay, I have some more. I didn't know if I was waiting for Carol to get back.
Yeah, Eric, just wait a second.
Yeah. Okay, so cross out, cross out literature. And I was, in, insert South Peak Water Tank Agreement. Okay. Then that was it. All right, line 251. We're talking about South Peak applying for a lot that's under 10,000 square feet. Can we add at the end of that sentence, the one lot less than 10,000 square feet would be part of a larger subdivision? It's not like the, 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 the. Expectation is that that would be not just one lot they're gonna sub, apply for to be part of a whole subdivision. Yes.
LJ, could you say that as part of a whole phase instead of subdivision because it's a phase, right, that they're applying for?
Uh, correct, correct. Well, it'd be, it would be a subdivision application though.
So right, so they're not doing a one lot subdivision is the point you're trying to make, right?
They're not doing a one lot, it's part of a large subdivision.
Because it's a planned development, that's why I thought all phases will come in, each phase is different.
Would be part of a larger subdivision. Line 368. It says the page parking area paved, paved. All right, line 575 where it says it's inaudible. Can we just cross out all that stuff that's in red and insert discussion points included?
Sorry, what line are you on?
Line 575. So discussion points included, colon, and then line 576 through 84, we can just leave all of those points as bullet points. Just. Um. And then on line 584, which is the last of those bullet points. Um. It says the last four words is peace to provide access. Can we change that to peace to provide driveway access? Um, to the main road. And that's all I had.
Okay. You know, I think it says alternate Josh and I's seated as a full member. I believe he's a, was a full member at that meeting. Right on, right at the beginning, line 28. Right, because he took over once, Steve. Yeah. Yeah. Does anyone have anything else for, um, May 22nd? Your motion except minutes is complete with the corrections noted.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, carries. Consideration of the meeting minutes from Wednesday, June 12, 2024. Anyone have anything for those minutes?
Um, did we just get those tonight? I haven't even looked at them.
So. Want to table these?
I'll make a motion to table.
All right. Table discussion on these till another meeting?
Yes.
All right, Mike's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, proposed. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Mark Legosian, DVA South Peak LLC, modify three lots and create a total of 28 new lots referred to as Phase Four or Upper Crooked Mountain Road subdivision or Aspen Heights.
Sure, so John Warzoka with Horizons Engineering here with Mark. Um, I think as we left it last time, I recall we really had kind of three outstanding issues to address. We had the shared driveway issue. Um, we had the issue of the lot sizing and easements, and then we had the water main, the question of the water main.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we had a, we had a productive call with, with Ray yesterday. It was very helpful, so I think. Um, we hammered out all the easement issues, um, so have a revised plan here. That shows kind of the adjusted easements in the lot areas, um, so I think we're all set on that and address that. Um, we've eliminated all the shared driveways from lots. Each lot now has its own individual driveway. All the lots have frontage, um, so we've kind of eliminated that. Um, so really that, those two issues are now addressed, I believe, and then really the, the last remaining issue I think that has to be resolved is whether or not. This water main loop needs to, needs to happen.
Okay.
And for that, we've, Ron's here and I know that we, our, uh, our position is that we want to keep it as proposed right now with it. Dead ending at the end with the 1250 PSI.
Yeah.
Gallons per minute.
PSI?
No.
It's no making.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so the fire chief is here. Would you like to speak to that, Ron?
Yeah, so they're, they're meeting what's required of them without looping it. Um, but obviously I recommend having more water, more is always better, but they're meeting a requirement per the fire code. I don't want to speak to what Nate would talk to, but.
Okay.
On the fire end of things, he's meeting what needs to happen there.
What is the minimum requirement? 750?
Uh, depends on the size of the structure, but I think the minimum is 750.
Okay.
Is that PSI?
No. Yeah, that's permanent, yeah.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm.
750 gallons, and what do, what do you have now?
1250 proposed.
1250 proposed.
So more is always, when you're fighting a fire, imagine, Ron, you could detest the said, imagine more pressure is always ideal.
Well, pressure and volume.
Pressure and volume, but we're, you know, it's going to be a large financial burden and a lot of work and energy that we, if you drive up fireside, you see how much we're already working through that project. So to go back and change projects and do things, there's a lot of reasons why we want to say. Let's stay with the 1250, which is way more than what is minimally required. To allow us to move this forward.
Okay, Cal, would you like to speak to that?
Jim?
Okay, hold on, Paul.
I can't hear Carol.
Oh, Cal, oh, no microphone.
Um. I just sat in at a meeting where we discussed all the reasons why looping made sense and. Why it made sense to look at the big picture. For this, I mean, this is a small piece of a bigger picture. Um, and maybe Ray can speak to this, but I'm a little, um, confused about. What Ron just said after our big discussion that we just had this evening, so. Um, I guess I'm asking for assistance here, Ray.
Ray, would you like to add to that?
Uh, yes, hi, hello, how's everybody doing this evening?
Fine, good.
Good, good. Uh, yeah, as we spoke about, I think it was at the last planning board meeting, um, at the end of the day, it's, uh, you know, the fire department sets the standard as far as fire protection, um, is concerned and. You know, the discussions that, uh, and Ron related, discussions we've had so far, um, to date with, uh, with Ron, uh, as far as fire protection is concerned. Uh, again, as Ron articulated, more is better, so if he can get 2,000 gallons a minute. Um, that gives him, uh, more fire protection, uh, capacity to, to deal with a, deal with an event, um, in, within the development. Um, we did talk about last week, uh, or last time that, you know, the. 1,250 gallons per minute, um, is, you know, sufficient for residential, uh, neighborhood, so, um, Ron was correct on that. Uh, so it's really, it's the town's decision as to whether or not you want the 2,000 gallons a minute or the 1,250 gallons a minute. So technically speaking, both will, you know, both will provide fire protection, but as Ron articulated. And what I heard from Ron was in ha- having the past is, you know, more is better, so. I think the issue is before the planning board is to determine whether the planning board wants more or less.
Okay.
The other issues, as far as the other issues, um, in terms of water quality, um, certainly anytime you loop a water main, uh, it enhances water quality. Anytime there's a dead end, particularly if it's a dead end street where. You know, it's, uh, you know, seasonal, um, homeowners, uh, you have potentially water quality issues with stagnant water and age water main. Uh, which is being proposed, if it's looped, um, you, you enhance water quality. Uh, and then certainly for redundancy, if you're looping a water main, if one end of the main needs to be serviced or needs to be taken out of service, you don't have to shut off. You know, the whole development, you don't have to shut off a portion of it, so, um. For all those reasons, again, it's just a reiteration of what we said last time, it's, you know, it's, it's better to loop it if you can.
Okay.
Yeah, Paul. Yeah, so. How much more pressure would we get by looping it, or how many gallons per minute more would we get by looping it?
I believe, um. I believe it was 2,000 gallons a minute for 2,000.
So seven, 750, 2,000 versus 1250 proposed right now.
1250.
Where the minimum is.
Gallons a minute for the two hours versus 1250 gallons a minute for the two hours.
And, and can I ask, Mark, you talked about the, the cost. Can you tell me what, what those?
Yeah, hun- huh.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars as well as potential delays in a project that we are finally getting started with. So if we weren't well over the minimum, if we didn't design something that already was well over the minimum requirement. And we're not denying it, obviously more pressure is better. But if this was a simple, just task, it's one thing, but now it's, it's asking us to change up fireside from being on two separate zones now opposed to being on one. It's also requiring us to. Add moving. You know, structure, moving around things on Crooked Mountain Road.
And it. Mark, can you tell me how much, how much of the materials have already ordered? Because my understanding is that those materials. May not have been ordered yet. I mean, when I, when I go up and look at site, it's been a week since I've been there, but when I went up and looked at the site. It, it wasn't ready for any bowl ground infrastructure yet, so.
I mean, we've given a, a, over a half million dollar deposit to call their excavation, so I don't know exactly what he's ordered, but. You know, now this is a change order, right? This is a, this is not part of the plan that was there, but. We know that, you know, coming from Horizon's standpoint of what is spec, it's going to be different than what's there. It's going to cost more, um, so.
Go ahead. So I. I understand it's going to cost more, Mark, but I guess where I'm going with all this is that. When I look at that development, I understand probably may serve that development. Uh, per the state specs. As, and, and meet the requirement, but when I take a look at the, as Carol was talking about, the development as a whole. Um, to me. And, and, and looking at what could happen in a possible fire situation, to me, I guess more might be better not knowing what's in the future.
So, but what's in the future, this is a dead end road, so like, what we're proposing, I don't understand what would be in the future of this residential. Ski trail lock development, meaning if this was the dead end to it.
The, the chief could talk to, speak to that, because I mean, whenever you have a big fire, um, you always have, um, other. Fire departments come from other towns and, and they work from one end to help another end. Ron, could you speak it? Speak to any of that as to whether or not you think that looping would help in that regard?
Yeah, uh, obviously more is better, um. And when we do call on other departments, we'd have, be tapping more than probably one hydrant, so looping and redundancy. You know, would be better, um. I'd have to look at the plans there and just see. I only know, be honest with you, I don't even know how many homes are going to be up.
Like four, five, six, seven, eight homes off the very end, you know, you're talking. I, I guess my question for the town, is this something, is this something we should be changing the regulations in the town in general that looping is what needs to happen regardless of cost and or? What you have to go through for separate properties, I mean. Fireside and all these other lots, like, this is all a separate project. Now we're looping back and moving another main. So we're moving, not a main, but we're moving another section on Crooked Mountain Road. We're cutting up that asphalt, moving all this to create this loop, which we're already. 500 or 40% higher than the minimum amount at the 1250, so, you know, if I came in with 2,000, but there was a 3,000 option, like, when do we stop the more is better conversation?
Well, I guess to me, to me, Mark, that it would be dependent upon the size of the development as a whole.
But then, so you're telling, like, I guess what I'm trying to get at here to that point, Paul, is that if we had future development that was possible in the dead end. I would understand that, right? And I could see how, yeah, if we ever came off of it and added something else. But we are entirely landlocked in this cul-de-sac. There's no room to go off of it, so if you just look at the, which we've all looked at this. More than enough that there's no possibility of us adding another road off of it, going up higher, it's not on our land, going lower, it's already subdivided. Going to the right, there's already ski trails, existing lifts. There is nothing left for us to come off here, so there's no risk of adding any more demand. So there, it, it is not something I see having the need to plan for the future specifically to this. Waterline.
And maybe Ray, if I could ask Ray a question, Ray, who is the res, who has the liability for a, a dead end main? I know most developments typically that the, um, pipes and stuff like that are owned by the development. But the water in the pipes is typically, I believe, owned by the town or has, the town has a responsibility for it. So if there were contamination issues, how, how is something like that handled?
Well, um, how something like that handled, so if, I guess, you know. I, I think, I think at the end of the day, and this is, you know, my best guess. At the end of the day, if there was a contamination issue in the upper Crooked Mountain Road development. Um, and the town delivered to South Peak water quality that met federal and state standards. It would be the operator of the distribution system who would be the private developer in this case, so, um, that's assuming that the water quality issue came from stagnant water, which is what we're talking about here.
Which we, we're aware of.
You would have, the town would have to demonstrate, town is responsible for dem, to, for delivering the water quality as you, as you.
No, no, I, yeah, yep, I understand. It, it just seems to me like it's, it, it becomes a unknown and an illegal battle at that point versus having it, having it looped and then, uh, pretty much. Having a much better, um, chance of, of not having any stagnant or, or dead space water. Especially in a development that's seasonal. If it wasn't seasonal, maybe, but I mean, I think a lot of these developments are seasonal, so I guess I would just. I'm just a little concerned about that.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add? Steve?
I can't hear you.
Yes, we are.
Sorry. The, the way it's engineered, you're all set with everything.
We do this all the time.
That, I'm sitting, I think, and I can't think of a place in town that's got a loop.
There are loops up in Beechwood.
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, there's nothing on that side of the road. I know that for sure.
There's a lot in town. There's a lot of loops. Nate could speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is always better to loop if you cost benefit, right? It's, it's always a cost benefit. In this case, you know, we priced another project very fairly recently that had a, that basically was a similar situation where we had to install retroactive via PRV vault with a PRV, similar. Situation. That was 180 grand just for the vault and the PRV installation. That, and so in that case, that's where, you know, market also would have to install a bunch of individual PRVs. We'd have water pressure above 100 PSI, so we'd need to get approval for the state on that, and then we, we'd also have to install that pipe. So there's a significant cost burden to mark, and I guess my argument is, is just, I'm not sure the benefit is there, kind of marginal benefit for that big cost. Also, it would require something to now get a waiver for additional over 100 PSI. So like, we go from meeting all the standards, not needing any waivers, to now, we won't, we gotta go back and do these other things at a huge cost. Where I just don't see it. Yeah, and it's right pointing out, the state will, will entertain that waiver. We would need a letter from the town saying that the town is requiring this in order to support that request to the state. And our opinion is it's always best to not ask for waivers when you don't need them, but again.
They're okay with it the way it sits.
They're, yeah, they'd be fine with it. They'd be fine with it the way it is.
I can understand Beechwood being a loop because it is a loop. You know, it's really a way to get out of it if they wanted to. But I know everything on the other, I bet there's 12 or 15 deadheads on, um, Clearbrook. Yeah. Yeah.
But just, I mean, South Peak alone, Friendship Court, that, that, you know what I mean, like, oh, we already serviced all this and these are all these other ones that have been that way. No problems.
Okay, now, what is the actual risk of the water being stagnant and having a water quality issue? I mean.
I, I don't see, I, I mean, not a single house that I'm building up there doesn't have some form of irrigation. Right, like, I'm just saying, like, water's always moving around. Everyone's got different sensors on things that. You know, I see people in their houses all the time. We're doing property checks for everybody, not, like, no one's building these houses and saying, yeah, I'm just gone, out of sight, out of mind. I'll come back next winter and hope everything's fine. You know, we're constantly watching something, so I don't see any risk of all houses not, nobody running any water. For extended amounts of time. And just from a technical perspective, just from my experience in doing water work, and again, I'm not a professional engineer, but I've been around this for a long time. And basically, the issue becomes oftentimes, it's not, you know, so the, the water operator is injecting chlorine, I think, I think Lincoln injects chlorine, which is a disinfectant, and it has a limited, basically a limited time. So for that chlorine residual to remain in the system, so the chlorine residual can dissipate, however. There, unless there's bacteria in that system that can grow, it's just the water's going to sit there, it's still clean, even though the chlorine residual tapers off, so I'm sure. People in the system right now are at the end of the line, and they probably don't taste a lot of chlorine there because the residuals dissipated, but their water's fine. What really often is the challenge here from my experience, and Ray can maybe offer his experience, but from my experience, where the issue becomes is that if the operator has a problem. And bacteria gets into the system, he has hits in his, in his regular bacteria sampling, now he's got to chase that out. And you've got these dead end lines that aren't using much water, so you got to force the chlorine to get to the dead ends, and you just have to flush more. You got to get out and you got to hit those hydrants and flush them to clean out those dead end lines to get that chlorine residual out throughout the entire system, so it just, it requires that, you know, but that's what an operator's job is to do that kind of stuff. So that's my personal experience with this and the risk.
So. Jim, if I could, if I could ask. Um, on the dead end lines, is there currently designed, I, I don't have the plan in front of me, but. Is there currently hydrants on every dead end line? That you're proposing in the.
I would think so, yeah.
Yes. Yes, Paul, we have, we have hydrants on the end of the line, yep.
Right on the end of the line, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
That makes, that, that does make it better for flushing, you're right. That makes, that that does make it better for flushing, you're right.
You need a microphone, Carol.
They do that every year. Anyway, right?
Um, so, so I'm just saying that we do not have. Um, updated plans with the changes that he's talking about. So I'm just letting you know that you have not seen it.
Do now.
Well, we're.
It'd be the licensed water operator for South Peak that would operate. Does the town.
That's what we want.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Okay, Nate is in Nate um, Hatteaway, who's the Public Works Director. He is in charge of the water. To the main on the street, uh, the town street, and then the. The developments like South Peak are then hooked up and they have a pores, which is um. I can never remember what a pores privately operated. So they have to have somebody redistribution system. So so they're responsible for the water once it goes from the town into their system. So they're gonna.
I don't believe that's correct. I think what they, uh, uh, unless they're pumping it. I think that they're.
They are pumping it.
So you, so and and. So South Peak will be repumping and redistributing this water? Mark, is that the way that?
No, there's no, so Paul, this will be on the upper press. So when the tank comes online.
When the tank comes online, there'll be no redistribution, right?
There'll be no, there'll be no, there'll be no booster. It's gonna be off the high zone of the tank.
Once, once the tank is in.
Yeah, once the tank is in, yeah.
But but until then, if you build houses, you're gonna operate off of the pump station, right?
Uh, well, they they could, but we're not, we're we're assuming that by the time. Houses are being constructed above that ten fifty, we talked about this, that, or above a thousand rather, that that the tank will be online.
But.
The ownership of the water system within South Peak is remaining. In the property as property of South Peak, the town isn't taking over that. That water system in that.
We're basically just supplying the water and they're gonna distribute it.
South Peak will always be responsible for the water quality of what we from our lines and servicing them and all those items.
Yeah, so South Peak would be required to have a distribution system person. I believe licensed that that will be responsible to maintain their distribution system.
That's correct. You're right, exactly.
Do we, that person will be in charge of that.
Right, and that's why they're gonna be in charge of flushing the hydrant at the end of the line, doing everything that we need to do to make this right. So we are trying to design things that are now. Forty, fifty percent higher than the minimum, saying that's what we would like to propose tonight and keep things moving.
Okay, Mike has a question.
Well, the question is, do we get reports from them saying that they've done this stuff? Are we responsible for any of?
I think it's up to the licensed water system operator to work with DES. I don't think it's the town gets involved.
And you can look up any. Public water system or licensed water system on the Hampshire DES one stop. You just search the site and you can find out, you can see the reports and everything.
Go further on that. So so DES requires regular water quality testing.
This is the state now.
The state, yes, the State Department of Environmental Services Drinking Water Group requires regular testing of bacteria. Uh, out in the system at various, and they have established sampling locations. So the licensed operator. That's in charge of whatever systems, whether it's Lincoln system or what would be considered a redistribution system. There's a. Separate classification of a privately owned redistribution system, if that's what that is, this is. Um, and there's sampling requirements where every quarter, every so often, monthly, whatever it is, whatever their permit requires. You gotta go into specific homes and go to specific taps and take your samples and submit those for bacteria testing. And if there's a hit. Then you've got to do, take an, you gotta do action. You gotta, you gotta be basically chlorinate, try to chase it out, do flushing. Figure out where the source of that bacteria is coming from and and address it.
Thank you.
Do you want to have anything else on this? Did you want to say something else, Carol? Okay. Oh, okay, okay, that's fine. Um. Okay, and I believe you haven't answered the technical review memorandum. Is that?
Uh, no, we still have to go through and finalize. We had a call with Ray yesterday, went through a bunch of items. Um, so I think we still have to get his concurrence on like dotting I's, crossing T's on a bunch of little things. Um, so he has not finally signed off, but what we look for or ask for is that. If we've addressed all the big picture stuff, we'd ask for an approval that would be conditional on us satisfying all those comments that. You know, Ray had in that final technical memorandum.
Okay, can you show us where the lots are and how they've been corrected?
Yeah, so basically. Hey Jim, do we address the uh, the stormwater issues? Was that addressing that? How many lots it was and?
You mean the, yes, you mean having, having the drainage systems deducted from the lot size or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well. I mean, according to the current criteria, there there isn't any need to do that.
Okay, well, I I thought when I originally started, there was one or two, one, maybe two that that might met that criteria, so that's why I'm.
Okay, I think they addressed that if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. If you back out the, if you back out the water, um. Stormwater drainage systems. Just, you're still over fifteen thousand square feet per lot. Say, say it again, John, I didn't catch it. Yeah, yeah, okay, I heard.
So, uh, yeah, it's on.
Do we have that one in this packet? Oh, okay. All right.
Hey Jim, this is Paul. I'm gonna have to sign off. I'll uh. I've got to be someplace.
Okay, no problem. Enjoy your margarita.
It's okay, I can, we can.
Yeah, I gotta tip.
Yeah, you guys, you guys are getting that. Three size sets, there's.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're gonna do with those.
Okay, well.
This is the one. This is the one.
You have this one.
Um, you guys are gonna have to leave the at least one set of the plans, so like. You know, the how you like to take them home and whatever, but. Um, I do not have a full set.
Okay.
This goes over here, right? Just see the circle.
Right, this. Row here, right?
Yep.
This will be up, right?
Because Ray's not gonna be able to look at him while he's talking to.
Yeah. Okay, what are the lots in question from last meeting? Share with us.
In the last meeting, it's this one. The corner, so you can see we've got the sizes listed on there, plenty of, made the lot a little wider.
Okay.
So that was all set. And then it was um, this lot here. And this lot here. Were the, were the ones with the shared driveway. We originally had the driveway going up. Line here, like a shared driveway to get up here, but now what we've done is basically. Put the lot line down the middle and have two driveways side by side. So basically, the driveways are right side by side. We want to, we basically create in one bench. A lot like both right down the middle of the bench, both with driveway, both with driveway, lot line down the middle, each driveway is on its own. Um, and then the other things that we changed, so this uh, uphill drainage easement, something we discussed with Ray yesterday. Um, it's kind of a swale gradient that catches a runoff before it gets down. Um, and the rest of the easements, following that, I don't know all the detail, my team has been working, sorry, my team has been working with Ray on these easements. So I'm not fully up to speed on the details of all the easements. Um, but I believe everything is on here that we've discussed.
Um, so Ray, have you seen this um, this easement sheet? Is this different than what we saw earlier?
I I have not seen a revised um, easement exhibit since.
Yeah, this was just finished like this morning, so um, I can see if I got it in my mail now.
I haven't seen it, Carol, to answer your question.
Stop pulling pencil crayons to on this, you.
I don't have it in.
What's the other thing besides the uh? Loop in the water system.
So it's just, so the three things, three things are the the shared driveway, which we just talked about. The easements, which we just talked about, and the water man. Those were the three things.
Anyone having questions on this? It's a pleasure the board for moving forward here. We should. At least decide if we're satisfied with what they presented us.
What else can you do?
Okay, I guess I I have a question. I have a, just a question for Ray then. Um. I get Ray, it's easy for us to see on the plans what they did with the um. Uh, driveways in lot size changes and that they. Um. Meet what we had talked about before, which is that the driveway from each lot connects to the road over its own land with no. Driveway easements, et cetera. Um, I guess just visually, that's. Easy for us to see, right? Um, we've already talked about and made a decision on on the water. Um. At, you know, the, at the twelve fifty and not looping. The other thing is with. Well, I don't know if we did, we didn't decide it. We discussed it. I should say, we discussed it and understand that that e- either it's a yes or a no, but has. Uh. Not, there's no, no changes on this that we need to understand to to have that, make that decision. Um, but the the other thing was the easements. Is is that something in your opinion that would be a um, a a. Post-approval condition to review the easements um, as drawn out and as written as um. The written easements, um, would that be? Feasible and normal to 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 make that a post-approval condition?
Um, it would be my recommendation that the planning board fully understand what the easement requirements are and understand. Um, what the easements are before approval. That's, that's my recommendation. If you don't understand them now, then. I suggest holding off until such time as you do, um, because one of the, I I just make a, just a point of note. I mean, the easements are changing. So one of the issues we talked about at our meeting yesterday was the wing wall easement. And we discussed different construct and methods of construction in order to. Make a determination as to what those easement limits should look like. Um, in addition, we, last week we reviewed, I think it was last week. We reviewed a project where the side slope easement for the ski trail was. Um, impacting four lots and one of the lot owners had issues with the extent of that slope impact. So they redesigned the ski trail in order to minimize the slope easement that was required on that particular lot. So. The easements, in my opinion, at this point are still in flux. So. You might want to just hold off on. Giving final approval or even conditional approval until you, until such time as you understand what the easement requirements are.
So we certainly can walk through all of the easements tonight and I, we can explain what they all are, why they're there. We can talk about the wing wall easement. Because as Ray Ray commented, we did talk about that yesterday. We can talk about the drainage easements. I can explain. For the most part, what they are. There's a couple that I'm not entirely clear what they are, but they're on the plan as a result of discussions between Ray. And again, I think. Our opinion is why do we need to come back another night for this when we're really there with all of this? And again, we could certainly explain. Ninety-nine percent of all this easement stuff and make, and hopefully get satisfied. Okay. I also don't know where it. I I'm. Some of the specific aspects of this, the construction of the road, right? Like. When you're building roads, you're gonna build something. Then ultimately sell the lots, like. Some of these easements, I'm just wondering where they are. Town ordinances on ease, like why, like, we're doing all this to be eventful and to work together. But some of the easements, like around the bridge and, like, I know I live on a, at a bridge at South Peak. And there's no easements associated with that, and it's always the nature of what it is, and it's part of South Peak. You know, our mast, our documents, the AG approved documents allow for us as the declarant. In the resort to go on people's property to maintain drainage, maintain, do all these things. So this, there already is an easement to cover all the different items. These are all being put on there to just be. Extremely clear moving forward. So so. For each one of these easements that we see on this colored map. Is there a specific written easement for those or is it just covered in your your condo docs? It would be covered without these being on it. I mean, this is why in the past, these weren't put in. So like, this is. You know, we have the ability to go on and deal with drainage throughout because things can change and could change up mountain. There could be different things. So everybody, we've had a situation with drainage in the past that we then had to go on people's properties. We can't alter their actual homes. That's why the buildable envelope is such. We also have all the, when we get land use permits, we have to go in and apply and go through that process as well. So I I think what I'm proposing here is we have these plans in front of us. We're putting all these easements and we're happy to. You know, work with the town, if you will, that. That is, we can easily go through it, but I agree with Ray that there's nothing on here that needs to be reviewed back and forth with Ray after we can explain them to you guys. And if you guys agree with them, then we're there.
Okay, Carol.
Well, I don't think Ray agreed with that, but we also had talked about the easements being on the individual lots. And the, and I thought that, that discussions with Ray, that you were amenable to that. Because they, the people who complained to us about. Um, things that happened that are not part of the easement, they're gonna complain to not just you, but to us. Um, and so we, we were talking about having the easements as being part of the deed. So it was very clear, you know, like, for example, the people who spoke at the last hearing, you know, they're. They were saying, oh, no, you know, we don't want to have um, the ski trails shown on our. Um, you know, on the maps because then. Uh, they, because they didn't have an easement and it was gonna conflict with their drainage easement. Um, you may remember that conversation. Um, and the, you know, when we were talking about it, we were talking about how. The easements were gonna show up on the deeds so that it was clear to everyone that that. Property was subject to a maintenance of, you know, the ski trail or whatever else was in there. And, you know, now you're talking about like, we had made some kind of agreement that there wasn't gonna be any. Uh, easements associated with the deeds and I certainly don't. easements associated with the deeds. And I certainly don't remember that. That was, I mean, that is like a complete 180 from what we talked about before. So, um, so I'm not sure what the deal was.
If you were to get approval here, you started some lots with the, with the deed to reference this plan that's going to be on file at the registry.
Yeah, the recorded plan that's recorded, the subdivision plan that's recorded in the registry is going to show the easements on the plan.
And then when you give a deed, it's going to reference the recorded plan.
Recorded plan. So the deed will reference the recorded plan and the recorded plan will show the easements.
Including these easements that are in front of it tonight.
Okay.
Okay. So here's my problem. Okay. They're, they're going to sell that lot and they're, you know, hopefully for you, you're going to make a killing and you're going to go live down in Florida somewhere. And so we're going to be, people are going to come in, they're going to try to get a land use permit to build a house on that lot. And they're probably not going to check that plan in order to see where the easements are. So they're going to come in with, you know, just their.
Carol, uh, not to interrupt, but, but it's, it's typical, very common to reference a recorded plan in a deed. So it's basically the same. And so when you go on the registry and you pull down a deed, you can also pull down the recorded plan.
Okay. You're assuming that you have poor people who actually are going to buy your lots, who are going to get a bank involved. The bank is the one who's going to require some kind of a title search and they're going to care. But your people are going to come in and pay cash. And, and I'm just telling you, they're, they don't check and they come, they come to us to complain and moan and groan because something shows up that they're not aware of.
They may, so I guess my personal and, and Mark, I don't want to speak for Mark, but they may come to you and complain, but this is a matter that entirely is between the owner, the, the association at that point. If Mark sails off into the sunset, it's the easement holder and the property owner. The town doesn't really have a horse in that race as I understand it.
So they're going to come in with their application for their building, their building envelope. So what happens if they're building their envelope, they're just going to show me the 15 feet all the way around the lot. And then they're not going to have any reference to any kind of easement on their, on their plan and they're going to have, so what if they are going to propose?
Require us to have ARB approval from South Peak, which has always been the case. So South Peaks provides approval to make sure abides by all the rules and regulations inside South Peak.
Well.
At the application.
You would think, but our experience with not just South Peak, but other ones.
We're starting to reach.
Talk at once, I can't.
Okay. I'm just telling you that they, it should be very clear and just putting it on that map right there is probably not going to do it for whoever issues building permits after I'm retired.
What, what, what do you think would do it? So it's going to be on the plan and the plan is going to be recorded at the registry and the deeds are going to reference the recorded plan. So I mean, I guess the question, what, what do you think would set would?
But it's no different than what we're talking about. If it's a deed in writing and it says easement or, because there's a million easements throughout their entire property, they're buying in a resort, you know, meaning they have to pay condo fees or, or, you know, monthly fees, like it's a private neighborhood. We have to pay, they're paying towards plowing, they're doing all these things. So like, I, I just don't want to keep creating. I feel like we're just keep moving this.
Would, would it, would it be easier? Would it, would it, just, just, I mean, would it be easier to require any land use permit up in South Peak that they, they bring in a copy of their subdivision plan with their land use permit application?
Yes.
I mean, I mean, you'll ask him to bring in a deed to show what they own. If they just brought in the subdivision application, it would show what they own and what the easements are on it and where the driveway belongs and setbacks. I mean.
Why don't we just make it be a approval by the South Peak homeowners association so that we're being responsible and held to that? Like, I'm happy to make that be the burden. We have to, we spend a tremendous amount of time self-regulating South Peak.
Right. But I don't know if the town should be in the business of enforcing, and I don't want to say your rules, but every condominium association, homeowners association in this town, it's not our job to enforce those rules. If they meet the town rules, we should be able to say yes. If your association says you have to paint your house pink, okay? But they come in and ask for a blue house, we're going to give them a blue house. You can deal with, with the pink issue.
But aren't we proposing something here that meets all the rules and regulations and that people have to meet the rules and regulations themselves? Like, I guess what I'm missing here is we're proposing that we're going to put the easements, double the easements, if you will.
And I'm agreeing with you on that. I don't know what else is in your condo docs that, that may cause someone, cause the land donor to be refused by your board, but they meet all the town requirements. I'm saying if that's the case, the town should approve it. But in that same case, the town should be able to look at the subdivision plan and say, okay, your lot is whatever, 17,000 square feet, because that's what it says in the subdivision plan. And here's where the easement for the, uh, for the, um, slope or utilities or whatever is, and, and just use that. It seems to be a lot stronger of a document than a written deed.
Okay. Well, isn't a survey, you're not going to require a survey for a new house? And I would think the survey would find, survey would find easements.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and honestly, if you're going to pull the deed, pull the, you're not, I gotta know about it at all because you're not even going to be describe all of these easements with meets and bounds with a page full of, which means nothing to someone. Because unless you're a surveyor, you're not going to be like, okay, you know, X number of degrees, X number of minutes, X numbers of seconds, 165 feet to an iron pin to go, you know, it, nobody really follows that. So a plan is worth a thousand words when it comes to that. So our perspective is, is that if you pull the deed, you're going to pull the plan and it's on the plan. And plus there would be a narrative description on the deed saying, look, it's subject to the easements on the plan. So that, so it's somebody just pulls the deed for sake, for that argument, they're going to be like, oh, wait a minute, what easements? I guess I got to look at the plan. So.
You have something, Mike?
No, I mean, we can only go so far with things, I'm assuming here. Um, I understand Carol's point because people come in and they start yelling.
I understand that, but.
Yeah, but that again, yeah. But if the deed represents the easements, which does the plan, blah, blah, blah. I mean, I don't know how much more, uh, spinning we have to do.
Uh, Jim, can I just interject in the conversation again? I just want to put this out there just for the planning board's information. So several of these easements are like drainage easements, like one of the, one of the comments that we had on our last submittal and absolute, and the submittal before that, and it was a repeat comment had to do with a drainage swale that's located up gradient of some of the lots. And that drainage swale is part of the stormwater management system that is, that is, um, designed in compliance with the stormwater management ordinance. The easement that they were proposing was insufficient in order to maintain that, uh, drainage swale long-term. So that's, for example, that's one of the comments that we have. We haven't seen a revised, revised plan that shows they made an adjustment on that. I'm assuming based on the conversation we had with Horizons yesterday, that adjustment has been made, but we haven't confirmed that. So I just want to identify that as an example. A lot of these easements are necessary in order to ensure compliance long-term with the town's stormwater management ordinance. So that's why these things, these easements are important and I would think they would be important to the planning board. So they're not fully ironed out as we sit here today from our perspective. They may be in front of the, you know, in front of the documents that you have in front of you now, but they aren't fully ironed out uh, from a technical review standpoint.
Okay. But if, if the board understands what, what they are, we could, that could be resolved administratively.
Yeah, certainly. It could be resolved administratively, but I just wanted to let you know, I just wanted to share that information with you just so that you can make the best decision for your community. So, um, whatever you decide is, you know, we'll do all the follow-up, uh, for compliance, um, if that's what you desire to do.
Okay.
So I guess one comment on this is I think while I certainly understand what Ray's perspective is that the easements are not all, like Ray has not had opportunity to review everything that we went over because we just went over it yesterday. Um, however, I would represent that there were no showstoppers from our perspective in here, like all the easements have been addressed. We added that easement on the, the upgrading drainage swell that Ray requested. We added, we, we adjusted the, the wing wall easements. We can walk through tonight, all the easements on the plan. We can explain what they're all for again, with the exception of maybe one of them. But I think we, I would, you know, it's a lot of effort for our team to come here to the board. It's a lot of effort for the board to kind of review this. So we'd like to get to the point where I think our proposal would be administratively to be able to work through any minor residual cleanup that we need to do with Ray to make sure he's satisfied on this um, and not hold up moving forward with this. Because again, this is, in our opinion is like, we're there. Um, there's nothing left contentious for us to really work on here as far as we're concerned.
Do you want to do that? Oh.
Yeah. Go through them all. So, okay, microphone for the benefit of the public.
I guess so. The, the plan is color coded with the various, um, you know, uses of the easements. So we'll start out, you know, kind of running down the list. So the top one, the green easements, those are ski trail or pedestrian easements. So you can see that you've got, uh, two down on the end of the cul-de-sac. Um, you know, kind of feeding from what's called the chipper trail coming down into the cul-de-sac. So those two, these, these two right here, these two right here, they're coming down. So those are ski trail easements. And then we have one coming from Fox Run down to Cedar Circle. So that's this one here. Yep, that one there. So those are, um, ski trail easements. Then moving down to the next one, trail and drainage easement. So that is the, um, it's a combination easement. So we, we, that easement addresses Ray's comment about the up gradient drainage conveyance. Basically that's a swale that's going to be installed, upgraded to these lots to catch the runoff from the ski trail and make sure it's not shedding down onto the lots, contributing to the drainage system. So that's this light blue, there's some trail easement in here. Um, and then it's also drainage. So that's these linear ones right along the top edge and coming down. Yep. All along the up gradient edge, as Ray pointed out, it is a component of the stormwater system. It catches that drainage. It's not, it's not water that needs to be treated because it's not within the, it's not within the project area. It's above that. So the idea is to capture that and shed it before it gets into the stormwater system. So that's all these on the upper edge.
Downhill.
Yeah. So you can, yeah, you can see it kind of goes, the ski slope, everything's coming down in this direction. Um, kind of heading south to north here, draining roughly comes down and then it goes in and discharges here and here, just kind of coming down. This is actually an access easement, this one, I think. Um, but this one is a drainage easement because you can see it kind of connects to that wetland.
Same with this one right here. It's another.
That's correct. Yep, that's correct. Yep, yep. Um, all right. Next one down the list is the, okay. So that one is, that one is, is separate. That one's the stormwater treatment practice there. So that one is, um, there's a couple of things in that easement. There's the stormwater treatment system that DES has required. Um, and there's also the slopes are entirely contained. So all the grading from that stormwater pond is contained within that easement area. So that's this one, right? Big one at the end. Yep, yep. Exactly. This one. Yep.
Okay. And we, what? What is the drainage, um, area that goes into that? Is it just, is it just uphill here or do you have underground?
Yeah, there's underground, there's drain, it all routes. It's not on this plan. It's on the civil plans. But basically everything in the bridge over captures and is treated there from the roadway, from the roadway. Yeah. Not the, not the stuff that's coming down through from above or anything that's intercepted by the uphill ditch. So just the roadway, basically.
Detention pond?
It's a, it's a treatment practice. So it's more than just a pond. It's, it's, the design is on the plans, but basically it's a, it's a bio retention system to treat the stormwater. Because the, the, the pen, the east branch is a outstanding resource water. We are now required to use these enhanced treatment practices everywhere within the watershed. It bio, it takes the sill and it takes the pollutant. So the, the, the main contaminants associated with stormwater are solids, sand, right? Road sand and then nutrients, you know, both from, you know, really there's a lot of phosphorus and other things in the road sand that gets in and it causes, you know, algae problems. So that, these treatment systems filter out the, the sediment and they also remove some of those pollutants.
Um, eventually discharged to all this rain.
It'll come out to this drainage way. Basically this is the big drainage that comes right down through. So.
Okay. And there'll be a maintenance manual.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Ray, I think has that, it goes, it discharges to this drainage, this, this wetland here, um, right here. That's a culver. So basically it spills over, runs out over the ground and it'll go, it'll eventually filter down into that wetland area and down. Okay. The next one, driveway and utility, the only thing remaining and I, this one, I don't have an exact answer on what utility is in this little area right here. I believe there may have been something related to the water or something. I'm not sure what that is. That one I do need to clarify. It's just that one little area. Originally that was for the driveway easement that we were going to have, um, and those were eliminated. So we don't have those anymore. Um, all right. Then moving down to the next one, we have utility easement in the orange, that's water and sewer. So basically at the end of the cul-de-sac, we got water running down one side, sewer coming down the other side. It's right here. Coming down across the Fox Run and going into, or well, really sewer now, not water. And also, um, I think there's, um, I think that's all there is right now is sewer, but we maintain those two easement areas. So, um.
And those come into our system, the drainage from all of.
No, not the drainage, the drainage, there's, there's, um, no, the drainage. Oh, the sewer, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sewer goes into your system. Yeah. So basically it goes down into fireside and then connects and goes, yeah, that way. Yep. Um, slope easements is the next one, the purple. So the slope easements are basically grading easements to get the driveways in for these private lots or to get the ski trail in. So in this case, these two are grading easements in order to get the driveway in here to access that back lot. So the outlines will be here, but the slope will extend down onto these budding lots. It's this one right here. So there's just slope easements there. One. And right here, it's a slope easement for that driveway. Um, so wing wall easement, those are, um, and those are basically for the, the wing walls of the bridge. Um, and that's a discussion we had with Ray yesterday, um, where we, we discussed and hammered out some details on how wide that easement needed to be, not just for, because Mark can actually, Mark's, but Ray's, Ray's comment was, well, we got to have you able to get in there and maintain that a hundred years from now. Need to fix the wing wall. You got to get in there. So we had discussed yesterday and agreed on a 20 foot wide wing wall easement there. So, um, the plan's been adjusted to show that for the wing walls. Um, and then finally, the last one, um, is the natural resource area easement. Yep. Which is a reddish hash one. And that's just for the wetland buffer here. So the one going down through the middle. Yep, here. Yep. And over there too. Yep. Yep. And over here, a little bit over here. Yep. Yep. So those are all easements on the plan. Um, there's quite a raft of them, but I think that covers everything. Um, so again, we feel on a high level, we've addressed this. I think certainly Ray needs to take a look and concur with just, you know, the, the, the minor details of the width and, you know, is he satisfied with the, with the orientation? But again, I think from a planning board perspective, like it's not going to change substantially.
Anyone having questions on the easements? Okay. So we talked about the uh, shared driveways. We talked about easements. Last thing is the water looping. So it's all going to be lots served by the dead-ended line.
So on the end of the cul-de-sac, so basically there's, well, kind of what you want to call the dead end.
So you roll those up, Steve. Keep two on there.
So there is a. On the other side of plans, okay. Yeah, yeah. So there is a hydrant here.
Okay.
On the very end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
It's right there. Tell me the other plans that I can give you that set. That's. Yeah, so hydrant, hydrant's right. That's going to serve your air.
It'll be a hydrant as well as a, as well as flushing. Right? Yeah, yep, exactly.
See, it's called out. Here's. It's called out right there, hydrant. I think I have a copy of that already from here, right?
What page are you looking at?
Point two.
Neck gets flushed out, just run right down the road. John, was that neck gets flushed out, just run right down the road?
Yeah, it'll go into the storm. Yeah, yeah, you know, because usually they blow it out under the pavement, so it doesn't scour a lot of.
How many gallons they let out?
They'll flush it. I mean, it's really up to the water operator, but usually they flush it at the full scour rate that you get. So it'll be a full 1250 when it rip.
Yeah, they'll, they'll probably use a diffuser so it doesn't cause erosion. It just kind of spreads it out.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, you want to get, you know, if we want, if you want to get that line velocity off.
Right.
Even if you have. Line that has a lot of usage. Let's say. These houses on the end of the line are occupied all the time. They're full families, right? That will keep the water turned over in the line, but sediment still accumulates in the line, like, you know. Iron and manganese will drop out of suspensions. Sometimes a little bit of sediment works between and the operator has a plant problem, whatever. So the only way to get that out of there is to move the water fast enough to scour the line. So you gotta open up the hydrant, let it rip to get the line up to a velocity that'll remove that sediment. I want to beat a dead horse for just a second, so I know exactly.
Sure.
How many gallons per minute are we talking right now? 1250?
1250.
And what's the PSI on that? PSI, I don't recall. It's in the Weston and Sampson report that they modeled, but I think it was like.
60?
We're gonna say 60 PSI, maybe like.
So. I can answer that question. So the, the 1250 GPM for two hours. That has to be, that's, that's the available fire flow. While maintaining a minimum of 20 PSI in the distribution system during a fire flow event. That's the available fire flow. That's what that number means.
Great.
Just to clarify, Ray, though, that that 20 pounds is in the whole system. It might not be in front of. Whatever house is on fire, but that's in the whole system. The lowest it can go is 20. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the entire, your entire distribution system across all the pressure zones.
Yeah, and I think I was referring to the static pressure, so not the, the static pressure in the system when you're not flowing the hydrant.
Okay, so, so I've been quite a, quite a few things discussed tonight. You know, there are a few members of the public, so I'd like to make a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Would any member of the public like to comment?
Yes, I would. Jimmy?
Yeah, Dave. Yeah.
I, I apologize. I came into it as a meeting was already going on, but I heard some discussion about the water tank. And I was just curious if. If that is part of this discussion tonight or not.
No, not, we're not discussing about, we're not discussing the water tank. That's a separate, separate matter.
My other issue would be with the. Non-looping it. And I know that DES, they may not require it, but they strongly recommend that water lines be looped. And it's in order to. Don't have stagnant water that's in there. And where these are going to be second homes. And not being used all the time, the water could sit in there for quite some time. And then somebody at the higher elevation that goes to turn their water on could have some issues. And I think it would be. Important for them to have some kind of a loop system in that somehow. I know they have several. Lines up there that are dead ended and aren't looped. And where their second homes are not being used, it should be something they should consider.
Anyone else in the public like to speak? It's a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second. Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Has Nate Hattaway offered an opinion as to whether it should be looped or not?
I can answer that question and yes, yes, because I had the discussion with Nate and Ron. We, we coordinate on all this stuff all the time. So, and yes, Nate, Nate's position is that he prefers it be looped. Because of the water quality and redundancy considerations.
So.
So if you can loop it, you should loop it.
The water quality, if you don't use your home. Loop isn't going to change the water that's in your pipes going to your house. Meaning.
Yeah. The curb stop is yours, basically.
Right. So like. If we're. What, what I'm stressed, like, what I'm like, trying to stress here is that. Yes, I'm not denying that there's, in a perfect world, it wouldn't go over 100 PSI either, and we wouldn't need that waiver, and there'd be. More is better and loops are always better. And if it made sense, we would do it. If we had a road that went around. It just doesn't seem to outweigh. The cost, financial burden when we already meet it. And the fact that it already has an approved project, when ultimately if someone doesn't use their house for two months, that water would be sitting in that house anyways. And then ultimately, if there was a problem with the water, it's back on the South Peak problem anyways.
Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts, comments? Where do we want to go, Steve?
Has anybody heard of this problem before? Dead end anywhere? I think probably enough people run their water all, all winter and shed their heat anyways.
I just deal with the fireside thing, so that'd be a question.
We're not dealing with the problem.
I can, I can answer that question. Yes, there are, there are situations on dead end water mains where you have to increase the frequency of flushing. Because of stagnation issues. I've actually had situations where. We reduce the size of the water, water main when the water main was replaced because stagnant water issues in, in the oversized mains. It happens. This is my point.
Hey. There's a hydrant at the end of the line and we'll be responsible as we are to make sure everything's tested and everything complies.
So where do we want to go? Give them an answer one way or another.
For, for the. Pores. That's within all of South Peak. Is there like an operating manual for that? Like there is, like the stormwater system to, to ma- maintain it?
Likely, I, I don't know if there's an operating manual or not, but you have to have a licensed water system operator, which that license implies you know how to run a water system, you know, so that's. The, the, the burden of running that water system properly. Falls on the operator. So I deal with a lot of, I, I have a whole group that does nothing but municipal water and sewer work, and we do a ton of. Small community and even large community water system work. And most of the systems don't have. At least the ones that we work on don't often have an O and M manual for the distribution system. It often will be on, you'll have a pump station. Or a treatment works that'll have an O and M manual, but the, the distribution system, the operators. Kind of know, and they often will have, it's a judgment call on the operator. So like you got a dead end. That you know has got some chronic water quality issue. Well, you know, instead of flushing that one twice a year, spring and fall, maybe I ought to go hit that. Once in the summer and once in the winter too, you know, and, and just, you know, the operator's job, because you can't document every little thing in a water system. The operator's job is to be competent. Running that system and making sure that he's providing safe drinking water. So that's usually how this is viewed.
Different classes, licenses for water system.
That's correct. There's different classes of operation. A lot of that relates to the treatment. The grade of operator relates to what type of water treatment you have. So that's not related to the distribution. It's related to, you need a higher class of license if you have a surface water treatment plant. Because that requires, because you know, that you screw that one up, you're drinking river water and that's a problem. Whereas it's a little lower class if you've got a well, because most wells are pretty clean. There's often not, you're not supposed to have bacteria problems in your well, so it's. A little bit lower class of operator can run that type of system. And it also depends on how many customers you have, you know, so, yeah.
So you have one operator for all of South Peak?
It would be the same class for a redistribution system.
This.
Yes. Yes, we use subcontractors. The HOA. Handles all the subcontractors that are paid to take care of us.
Is this a master association or the sub association? Does every, each sub association? Sorry, sir.
Master.
All right, so. I. Go ahead.
I know you closed it to public participation, but I, I think I could clarify a little bit of the pores. System that they're on. If you want me to.
Yeah, please.
What their pores is designed or operating is from the pump house. Up to hemlock. And now maybe where they put their PRVs in there, but the rest of the system is all on the high pressure zone or the, or the town's system. And we operate that part of it and we flush all the hydrants. And the only part that they have the operator run is the pump house. So if they add this on, as, as long as they're going to continue. Maintaining the pores as, as their whole development, that's fine. That's why I asked about the water tank itself, because. That is part of the whole. Ball of wax here with that. And my understanding was when the water tank was built and put online. The town of Lincoln was going to take it over. And that means that it wouldn't be a pores if the town of Lincoln takes it all over. So as, as long as they. If you get that in writing, that it's going to be a pores, the whole South Peak development and the water tank and that, and the pump house that they have, that's, that's okay. But you, you should understand that. And that's all.
Hey.
That was, that was helpful. So, so. Once the South Peak, once the new tank comes on. You won't have any pumping going on there like there was now anywhere in South Peak, is that correct?
I'm not entirely sure exactly how it's going to work because that town's now engineering. The tank. So, you know, Scott, who's been dealing with going to all those meetings is there. So I know that at the moment, we're just working in conjunction with what the town's engineering and what they're proposing.
Can I ask you a question? David, up at, say, Clearbrook. They don't have any pumps up there. They just run off the town. Pressured system, is that correct? Oh, they do have a booster pump? Okay, up to that point, it's just town pressure. Does, does, does the town flush out all of their dead end?
Yes.
The town does.
They do. And they don't, they don't have many dead ends because that's the common practice is to loop everything. And that the town has even gone in and looped up, well, on Hanson Farm Road. Just a few years back, they looped that in because we had dead end issues with. That had two dead ends because the line fed it from the middle and they both dead ends. Where their troubles are.
If I may, so, so the, the looping issue, this is not. There's looping and there's looping, right? So there's looping when you have. Two lines in a, in the same pressure zone. It's easy. You just tie them together and the water will go whichever way it wants to go. It can move in both directions through that loop. If you have a. Leak on one side, the water will come the other way. You can shut a valve. That's not the case here. We have this loop. Spans two pressure zones. So the water can only move in one direction. It can only go down. There's no way to get water back up that loop. Unless that, unless those houses along. Upper, along Crooked Mountain Road. Were on the high zone. And that may be the intent, but what's going to happen then is we've got a bunch of houses. So if we take that PRV. And move it downhill. So that way you only have one PRV. So now you've got individual pressure. So you could say, okay, well, there's more maintenance with looping, right? But there are more maintenance if you don't loop because you got more flushing. But then if you. Do loop, now you've got individual PRVs on a whole bunch of houses. That, okay, it could be argued that you set them and forget them, but that's not the way those PRVs work. You do have to. Maintain them. You got to make sure that they're working effectively. So there's more there. We need a waiver for this. And it's not out of the realm of reason from my perspective. To do a dead end line like this with a flushing hydrant right on the end. So as it relates to the, now switching topics for a minute, as it relates to the redistribution system. If this was going to be classified as a separate redistribution system, I've worked on many of those that don't have a pumping station. They're just the line that the town owns ends. Oftentimes there's a master meter and then like, I do a lot of mobile home park work. Master meter, mobile home park owns all their water main. Town doesn't want to touch it because it's all junk. So it leaks all the time. So they're like, you're on your own. You got to maintain it. You got to worry about your own water quality. You got to worry about your own stuff. So that's, it's common and it does not necessarily need to have a pumping station to be called back.
Okay, so we, we have three experts that have nothing to gain. They're all saying that the system should be looped.
It would be. They don't have a financial stake in trying to exceed minimum. You know, standards, right? So like, if it was no money, I'm fine to do that. But to exceed things, when I've talked to numerous experts, so we have. Experts on staff as well as consulting experts that are all saying, no, this meets all the standards. We're actually going to have to ask for a waiver to reduce. To under 100 if we go down this route.
It re, re, meets the standards for fire flow. We're talking about water quality.
But is that?
States.
Yeah.
Submitting this plan to DES Design Review and DES Design Reviewers will approve this plan. So basically that meets. There's nothing in the DES Design Rules that say you can't have a dead end water. You have to have a flushing point at the end, which we do. But there's nothing in design rules or the AWWA standards to say. Can't have that yet. It's always preferable. But again. Our. Benefit of doing that with Mark. I mean, again, we're talking 300 plus thousand dollars to do this. And then the ongoing issue of having these individual PRVs and. Having water pressure in a few people's homes that's in excess of 100 PSI coming into their, their house unless you put the PRV in a ball out in the street. You know, and then you got a ball to deal with. I mean, there's a lot, it's, it's a pain in the neck. So it's kind of one of those things where our perspective is, we could argue, experts could argue all day on this.
But also keep in mind that this is something that to me came up. In the last 48 hours. I was here. In Lincoln. Year 28. Last year. Had a meeting. Had a meeting to talk about this project. I went to, you know, technical review and we went through it. I've been trying to be proactive on everything. Now fireside's under construction. We're going through it. If this didn't meet restrictions and we said, hey, it doesn't meet it, then it's a moot point. I have to do it and I'm accommodating that. But. It just feels like, okay, now we got, last meeting was about fire. Ron's here. I appreciate him coming to the meeting. We've got that. Now it's not about fire anymore. Now it's about this. We didn't even talk about water quality at the last meeting. It wasn't even brought up.
Excuse me, if I, if I could just interject, I brought, I did bring it up at the last meeting.
You did, it was brought up.
It was brought up.
Carol.
Well, and I, and I think that. I could be wrong and I'm asking Ray. But didn't, wasn't there initially a looping setup and then it changed at some, at some point?
Yeah, initially, initially, the, initially, they, the, the initial proposal was to loop. The water main through. Fireside. That was the initial proposal. And then like, you know, John can speak to this better than I can, but. My understanding is the. uh, Horizons thought the PRV was at a different location. That's why they showed the loop. And then when they realized it was in a different location, they took the loop out and dead ended it because you can't you, you'd have to relocate the PRV vault in order to make the loop work as John has alluded to before. So I don't know if you want to add to that, John?
No, Ray's absolutely right. That's essentially, we just threw that line on a plan. It was our concept plan. We're like, oh, I for the very reason we're talking about tonight, if it's easy to loop, you loop. So what we didn't do at that point in time is really, we didn't even consider when my designers just threw that line on the plan, because they always will loop water main if they can. They didn't consider the PRV location and what that meant to the pressure profile here. As we got into it, we're like, wait a minute, this is not easy to loop. And that's, and then we looked at it and wait, and then once we got the assessment back, we were like, okay, well, maybe we still have to loop it. If we can't get the fire flow, what do we need? And then when we determined that based on the fire, the fire flow analysis that Weston and Sampson did, that we did essentially meet the fire flow requirements. That's when we're like, okay, we're going to propose not looping. So that's, so I, I concur with what Ray said. Yep.
And if I could just interject, my recollection is the fireside, fireside was approved, assuming the loop was going to happen. There was an easement that's shown on the subdivision plan. Uh, on the civil plans, it shows the, the water main extending beyond the buildings to the easement. And then the upper crooked mountain road development was to connect to fireside with a water main. Um, once the upper crooked mountain road development was uh, completed.
The design.
My understanding of the fires, my recollection is fireside development was approved, assuming the loop was going to happen.
Well.
That matters to the planning board, but I just wanted to put that point out.
Uh, that's not exactly the way we see it. So we did show that easement on there. Um, but the water main design for fireside that was approved by DES was approved as a dead end. Um, and we did not, we showed the utility easement on the fireside plan. But I don't recall that being a specific discussion and, and part of the approval process for fireside that, oh, you have to have this water main looped in the future if you're going to do fireside. So there may have been an easement shown on the plan. There may have been some very cursory discussion on that, but the intent was never that, oh, fireside is predicated on having this loop. It was a separate discussion. So.
Okay. Anyone have?
Yeah, a question is, is, um, Cedar Drive or Cedar Road Circle? In the same pressure zone as the, as the cul-de-sac?
Well, it depends. It depends on if it's looped or not. If it's not looped.
If what's not looped, Cedar?
Uh, if the, if, no Cedar is not looped. If the loop depends on where the PRV is now, um, I think it's, it's right about at the entrance and I can't, I think it's on the high side. So yeah, so I guess I'm thinking this through as I'm talking. Yes, it'll always be on the high side. Ray, that's correct. It's always on the high side, right?
Yeah, but I think, well, I mean, as far as where it's located, it's on, it's to the west of Cedar Circle. So it's below Cedar Circle.
The PRV, the existing, yeah, the existing PRVs below Cedar Circle, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. The vault is, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so would, would that make a more practical place to do the looping is bring it from the end of the cul-de-sac on Crooked Mountain Road down to the end of the cul-de-sac on Cedar Drive? Cedar Drive is a dead end, right?
No.
I mean, I'm just looking at the map. It looks like there's a
Yeah, those lots are sold, right?
Lots are sold. And when you look at what what was being built in the foundation and alleged you're into, I mean, this is that's where I'm saying it's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And at this point.
Yeah. And at that point, you're not looping at the end of the line anyway. You'd have to come back around. I mean, we're kind of now. Yeah, Cedar Circle is not a loop. That's a dead end was approved. Um, you know, there's a, it's very common. I mean, it's very, very common to have dead end water mains in cul-de-sacs. It happens all the time, all over the state. It's a very, very common practice. You just got to be able to flush. Is it better to loop? I am not going to argue that it's always better to loop if you can.
Sack can't be right.
Right.
Fire protection, like you could come out of two ways, right? Like there's numerous things we could really dwell on when it comes to cul-de-sack living. It's not ideal. Right? But that's the nature of the cul-de-sack. Everything else in South Peak that ends in the cul-de-sack. Not be anything. And again, we're not asking for a waiver.
I mean, I don't know. Just from looking at this flat map that doesn't show any contours or any buildings from the cul-de-sac at the end of Crooked Mountain Road, you have a sewer easement. You have a sewer easement. Then, then you, you would have to cross the ski trail and then you have an easement here, although that one is for, for trail.
Right.
But, but it, it, I mean, is that a?
You have no easement. We have to go back to those owners and get the easement there. We gotta go back to Loon to get an easement there. We don't have that easement right now. Um, we'd have to, I guess we could come down through here, but again, then you're only looping from here to here. I mean, you see this picture, right? This is the street. You didn't get underneath the street. This rock wall is not even a ski trail. Ski trail is above. You're talking about going underground.
Like, but where, where is that?
This is in Cedar Circle. This is right here. And you're and then it's solid left. We came up with the foundation.
Oh, okay. Yep, yep.
And it's just, I, I'm
So right now Cedar Circle has a dead end.
Yes.
As does Hemlock.
Yes.
And who flushes those?
Oh, it's Hemlock, Marcus. I don't know Hemlock well enough.
No, Hemlock.
So.
As the
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Comes to the valves in Crooked Mountain Road. And it goes east, west, whatever.
Right, okay.
To the PRV vaults. But it stops at just before maybe base camp.
So I don't know, like, what about Yellow Birch? Would that be?
Yellow Birch? I'm not sure how the water line would run through Yellow Birch.
It probably is a dead end, Yellow Birch.
Might be.
Um, it's, I believe it's a dead end on, what's the little one down here, Mark? Um, yeah, that little cul-de-sac down on the bottom, that's a dead end.
Friendship Court's a dead end too.
Yeah. So again, I I can't stress that it's common, like we do this all.
Okay. So this, this would not be the first one in South Peak.
No, no.
And each one of those have a hydrant in the cul-de-sack. The ones that are currently.
And the town takes care of flushing those hydrants.
That's what Dave said.
Yeah, okay. So I thought he said. Steve?
Let me back up a minute. About an hour ago, we said it's just our job to give them water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what happens to it when it gets in there is like on them, right?
Right.
But Dave just said that that's not the case. That he flushed, that the town flushes the hydrants.
I did.
Yeah, that's right.
So who flushes? Nate?
Maintenance crew.
Water department, yeah, Nate.
Just like you do everywhere else. Clearbrook.
I mean, if they're doing it everywhere else, I mean, there's no reason to.
You said get rid of that fire hydrant. You don't need a fire hydrant. You're still be flushing it just like, it'd still be part of the flushing.
I think we're ready to make a decision. Anyone have any other questions? You want to make a decision tonight or do you want to have the engineers talk some more?
Oh, I think we would. I, I think, I think we're down to one decision and that's
The water line.
The water line.
We can do that.
Want to talk about conditions?
So I would ask on the water line, is it the planning boards? So the water per, the connection permit is issued by the town, by the select board, right? Not the planning board. Is that correct? Like the actual water connection permit?
Right. The administration does that.
Administration issues the permit. So would that be through that process or would it be through, because you know, again, oftentimes like the water connection permit is deferred by the planning. We're like, okay, yeah, we see water line on the plan, like it's up to the town to determine the details of the connection. I, I see that a lot on the stuff that I do. So, but.
Come on the fence. If I could just interject on that. Yeah. So, but what, what we're hearing from everybody on the town side is the recommendation is to loop the water main. Just wanted to put that on the table.
Yep.
What'd he say?
The town side, the town's, town's recommendation is to loop the water line, basically. So I mean, we don't make a decision here, they're going to tell you to loop it.
Yeah, I guess you're on the fence.
On the fence.
I, I, I guess Ray as a planning board member, going to make this decision here in the next few minutes. What would be my reason to say that they have to loop this when Cedar Circle, Yellow Birch, Friendship Circle, the other dead end there off of Crooked Mountain are all dead end uh, cul-de-sacs, uh, with the water just dead ends at a fire hydrant. So there's four existing right in that neighborhood, but we can't put in a number, a number five. Convince me of that.
Well, again, I think, I think even Dave said it kind of best. If you, if you can loop a water main, you should loop a water main, you know? And any water professional will tell you that. Um, any, uh, state regulator will tell you that. That that's the preferred, that's the preferred, um, condition. So the fact that you have dead ends in other parts of your town, doesn't mean you should add to that inventory of dead ends. Plus, as Dave indicated, you have to, you have to increase, our recommendation would be to increase the frequency of flushing on those dead end mains. If you add, if you add another dead end main to your system, that's one more hydrant that the, that your staff has to go out and flush and maintain four times a year instead of two times a year. So it, it adds to, it adds to the cost of your operation. So if you can loop, the, at the end of the day, if you can loop, you should loop.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I guess, I guess technically anything can be looped, but when it's in two different pressure zones. How common, how common is that?
Well, you wouldn't put, you wouldn't loop across two pressure zones without a PRV. So they would have to, as I think Mark had alluded to, you would have to move the PRV vault to a location in Crooked Mountain Road so that you can do the loop. So you can do the interconnect from the dead end at Upper Crooked Mountain Road. Um, through fireside to Crooked Mountain Road. So it can be done.
Okay. But so they're indicating if they go in with the dead end, DES is going to approve it. What's the likelihood? You said the state regulator would say if you can loop, loop. So they could loop, but yet they're saying, you know, the regulator is going to approve it.
Yeah, the regulator is going to look at a set of plans and he may not, he may, I mean, if he sees it, he can, he can approve a dead end, but if you tell him that you know, there's an, there's the other, there's another option here where you can actually loop the water main. Chances are he's going to say, uh, no, we prefer you loop the water main, not do the dead end. So all things, just just because you're going to prove something doesn't necessarily mean that the better option is the thing you should do. Again, we're talking water quality. We're talking public health here. As well as, you know, the, the things that Ron discussed, fire protection, enhanced fire protection.
Okay.
Question was, again, you guys are going to hire someone to flush the system, right? It's not.
No.
No, we're not.
That is not the case.
Okay. All right. So it's us that are going to be.
Town, yes. Public works.
Yeah. Okay.
Now that might not be the case if we have our own water tank. Meaning like, I think that right now we have to do this, as of right now, we are doing the dead ends is what I heard earlier tonight. Isn't that correct?
No.
We have some lines that we're man, maintaining and they're only flushing the ones that are in the low pressure zone.
Yeah, you're responsible for everything. So South Peak right now is responsible for everything on the high side of the, of the booster station.
Right. That's going to be eliminated with the tank.
Right. But I think that's what Marcus is moving. Is that he, there's an option that he has to maintain control of that.
Once, once the tank is built. I mean, the town's going to own the tank. And that high pressure zone um, will become part of the main pressure zone that, that's feeding off of that new, new tank. That.
Not if we're on our own tank.
What's that?
Not if we're on our own tank.
You mean, if you, if, if you don't, if you build your own tank instead of doing something with the town?
Built our own tank, it would be on our pressure zone.
Right. But it still wouldn't be in the same pressure zone as the fireside though.
Wouldn't.
Right, right. Correct. It'd be on the high zone.
So I don't know. Would that be? Is that considered a pause? Would that be considered a pause then?
Right.
It's up above the booster station. It would be.
But there won't be a booster station once that pump, that tank is there.
And I, that I am unclear, but if Mark owns and maintains the tank, he could take ownership of everything or maintain ownership and control of everything. Just hypothetically, if Mark had his own system up there, that the town is feeding his tank and he's controlling the tank. It's his tank. He's got to maintain the tank. He should say, okay, I'll maintain flushing of these dead end lines on my zone as well.
Well, I think I'd have to. I think that's part of it. I think that what we looked into initially is that we already have, we are paying a consultant to come in there and do work for us right now when it comes to water. Right? So I don't have all the exact details of it, but I just know the HOA has to handle that. So what I'm saying is there is already being done today. If the town can successfully get the larger tank in and it comes off, that's great. That's a win for everybody. That's what we all hope. But at the moment we are having to maintain aspects of our system already.
Yeah, there's the only, it's a very minimal amount of operation for a redistribution system. It's just, you gotta have a licensed operator. You gotta, and you gotta, gotta maintain it. You know, again, I think, I, I understand and I don't argue with the benefits of looping. It's just, I am of the opinion, there's some extenuating circumstances here, which take away and basically make it a wash. It's not, I understand the board, but it's, it's just from our perspective, it's, it's, it's just kind of really a heavy lift to do this loop for the, for the limited benefit it provides, the limited amount of additional redundancy it provides. Yes, it has some. But, and the limited water quality protection. So we're talking about a little bit more flushing of one hydrant. I mean, again, that's my argument. I'm, that's why my job is to argue for Mark and, and to me, it passes the straight face test. If we need the fire flow, I mean, we meet all the criteria. We meet the rules. It's just want more. Well, I want a fancier truck, but I can't afford one, so I don't have one, you know, and I want a lot of things, but I can't have them, but I have what's functioning. And I have what, what is needed. And that's what we're proposing. Okay.
But you know, it's a brand new sub, I mean, it's a brand new development, a blank sheet of paper. So I mean, why should we take shortcuts now?
I just would argue it's not a shortcut. I would argue it's not a shortcut. I would argue it's an accepted practice.
What, like, does that mean that going forward, like any cul-de-sac, like Cedar Circle, we didn't, this conversation?
Just asking a question.
No, I know. I'm just saying that like, we're going to have a lot of different cul-de-sacs in this, right? Like they're all going to be new at that time, right? That going through other big properties or other condo associations that are inside South Peak and doing all this is when there's a way to get it done without spending exorbitant amount of money. Moving PRVs, redoing that section of the road that was just redone, like going through different aspects of it. It just that's where I'm looking at it saying, wait a minute, why are we doing all this when it already meets standards? That's where I'm looking at it saying, wait a minute, why are we doing all this when it already meets standards? And then the new way that we'd be proposing by doing this loop, we would now have to go for a waiver. Meaning every individual house would have to have.
PRV.
PRV in. So now we've moved the PRV and added PRVs into people's homes.
Are we ready to make a decision here?
Do we want to talk about conditions before we make a decision?
Oh, this is one of the things we have to iron out, so.
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, when I say decision, I mean decision on looping versus not.
This is the first I've heard of looping. There's a whole town full of dead ends. I don't know. I don't think it's on us.
Oh, I mean. You mean, you don't think it's on the planning board? I mean, there's an option, they can either dead end the line or they can loop it up. Fireside. Feel better water quality and more fire. You know, we do have our experts that have all way in, it said it should be looped.
Yeah. I don't know what to say.
It's okay.
Still hung on this.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that. Three hundred thousand, how many lots?
Well. Seven, eight, you know. Lots at the end of that, there's not many.
Seven.
And I think three hundred, we don't know the exact number.
We don't, I mean, I throw three hundred out there, that's not, so that includes about a hundred and eighty for the PRV vault. You know, about, about a little, a little less than a hundred for water main, assuming no ledge. So I didn't carry a ledge number in there. And then we got individual PRVs. That we would have to install and we have not counted the homes up yet. So it could be. Could be a fair bit more than three hundred. I mean, that's, you know, again, to me, three hundred something grand on the minimum is a lot of money. Um, and again, it's just, I totally understand and I don't argue with the benefit. I just, you know, this is about probability and it's not that it will improve water quality. It just reduces. By some unknown amount, the chance that there may be a problem. There's a lot of dead ends out there that aren't, that haven't had any problems. It, it really depends on. A lot on how the overall system is being operated, on whether there's a problem or not. So if your operator is on top of the off, the whole system. If there's good water quality going into the system, if there's adequate chlorine residuals going into the system from the treatment plant. And the sources, then the chances of there being a problem are. Very low as opposed to if there is a problem, that's when it usually will rear its ugly head on these dead ends. So.
Okay. So, so Ray, when was the last time you've heard of a dead end system causing an issue with water quality?
When was the last time?
Yeah, I mean, how often do they cause water quality problems?
Um, well, again, if, if it's operated, if it's operated correctly, um. You know, that's, that, that, that's the key. I mean. I, I don't think you can put a number to how many times or even the last time, because.
Okay.
Um, the. I do know it occurs. Now, like I said, I shared, I shared a situation that it was a dead end main, there was only. Four, four or five buildings on it, and I can tell you, it was, it was a problem for the water and sewer superintendent. For twenty years. It always became a problem. He flushed it. He actually disinfected, he put, brought in a booster pump to disinfect that line and it was continually problem. He couldn't maintain a residual. Uh, disinfectant residual in that line and he wasn't meeting state standard. So. It can be a real operationally, it can be a problem and that becomes an operational challenge then. So. Again, you get better water quality if you loop the main. That's just the bottom line.
Hey, so if I may, just to, to counter what, not to counter what Ray said, I, I totally, I've seen the same thing. I've seen problems. With water quality on dead end lines in the past. Often, those are. Not just because it's, let's be clear, it's not just that it's dead end. So. A lot of times if you have very old aging tuberculated water main, old ductile iron cast iron main, it's got a lot of corrosion inside, a lot of surfaces for bacteria to grow on. That happens a lot where you end up with these bacteria issues in these systems that are just a nightmare to chase out. When you have old line, we're talking about brand new spanking new HDPE likely line here that we're going to be putting in. That is going to be, it won't have that issue that a lot of these, now I don't know what happened, the case that Ray's talking about, maybe. A different case, but that's when I've seen issues when you have these aging water systems that got old water main, it's already got problems. And you end up with a dead end and you just can't chase the bacteria out of it because the water main is so nasty. So. It's not, it's not apples to apples. It's not a fair comparison to say, well, you just got a problem here, you're going to have a problem.
If I could just interject on that, just to follow up comment on that. Sometime in the future, that water, then in water main is going to be an aged water main. Twenty years, thirty years. At some point in the future, that's going to be an old water main. Just because it's new the day it's put in. Doesn't mean it's not going to be problematic for, as I understand it now, the town's DPW. In the future. Again, you, you, you build, you build for sustainability. So you don't want to create a problem and if you can avoid a problem, that may potentially come up. Ten, twenty years down the road, you ought to avoid it if you can.
So to the.
He's making a good, he's making a good.
But let me, let me point out, this is plastic water line. So again, the problem with aging water main, when you talk about an unlined. Cast iron pipe that doesn't have any corrosion, you know, most new ductile iron pipe is cement lined. There's no metal exposed on the inside of the pipe because what causes issues when you end up with these corrosion issues. Now, I'm not going to speak to Ray's comment about. Condition of a water main. If a water main is installed properly. You know, that water line should last a hundred years. USDA, state revolving fund, all the funding agencies allow. HDPE PVC and ductile iron right now as materials that are accepted. Under, you know, the AWA standards for those water mains. So they're expected to last hundred year service life. Or, you know, is, is kind of what you shoot for on these things. So we're talking about plastic water main. So that is likely what's going to be installed here. We're not proposing ductile. So it's going to be. Either HDPE, high density polyethylene, meeting the AWA pressure spec, or it'll be PVC. Um, and those don't corrode. They don't have that issue that I'm referring to. And again, I don't. Race had experience with other things. I certainly understand that water main will age. And it will have issues somewhere down the road, but that's not, that's a separate deal than what we're talking about here.
So who would be responsible?
If I could just inter. You, 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 you do, even in plastic pipe, you can get, you can get iron bacteria clinging to the side of. Plastic pipe. So it is not correct to say that plastic pipe. Will deliver a higher water quality just because of the type of pipe material it is. So I just want to put that in front of the planning board.
Who's responsible for changing out the pipes as they corrode?
Who's gonna, yeah, you're gonna own the pipe, I believe, right?
Homeowners association, right? And, and that's why I was just verifying that the town wouldn't be the one, whether they're flushing them, like, if there's ever an issue, it's going to fall solely on South Peak. So it's not as if we're trying to make this, and it's going to look back and say, wow, geez, now this costs the town X. This is, we're responsible for maintaining that quality. And if it wasn't right, we have to do, we have to take care of it, whether it's paving, plowing or the water.
Anyone have, have anything else? I mean, you know, candidly, I think we ought to listen to our experts and look to line. That would be my, my thought.
Loop it whenever you can, whenever it's possible as long. This makes it basically can't.
Get things, what can't get done.
Yeah.
Right? So, you know, can it be done? Yes, but what cost and what price?
Hey, anyone else have anything?
No.
We're ready, conditions of approval. Okay, what do we have? So we have the easements. Review of the final set of plans. Technical.
Yeah, so we've, we've looked at the easements, but, but.
Subject Ray has to review them.
Yeah, and I see the whole plan. All the changes in the plans, including the driveway thing, but I mean, it looks good to us. Or to me, anyway. But subject to, to final technical review.
So review of plan changes and easements by technical review team. Um, is there a technical memorandum outstanding? Okay, what number is that?
All right, we have, is it, is it TM four?
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I believe it's, I believe it's, I believe it's number five, but I wouldn't.
Oh, five.
It's number five. I would, my suggestion is just make it condition upon, you know, uh, review and final sign off by the technical review team.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
Chuck, last time about. As a condition, a, a bond estimate to stabilize and revegetate. Disturbed area to, um. Abandon in place and secure utilities. And to complete, um, the storm water system.
Okay.
Right.
Stable, yeah. Yeah, you're going to cap the water and snowlines.
Bond or letter of credit.
Right.
Okay. You're supposed to get us a proposal for tonight's meeting. Do you have anything for us?
Scott has been going back to just compile all the quotes we're getting back because it's numerous companies that are working through that.
Okay.
So that way we'll get all those quotes and then Ray can, you know, have the backup for that.
But we did agree on those are the three things that one should cover. So if we could put those in the conditions. To guide the, and let the technical review team look at the.
Final numbers.
Final numbers, yeah.
So bond or a letter of credit? Carry out a microphone.
I, I, I think the approval, the, the condition should be bond or letter of credit.
Yeah.
His choice.
Right. See if you have anything else. Okay. So review of final plan changes. And easements by the technical review team. Technical memorandum number five and final review of plans by technical review team. On estimates to stabilize and revegetate, cap the water and snowlines and to finish the stormwater drainage. Final numbers to come from the TRT.
Final numbers should be approved by the TRT. We'll present them.
Okay. And. Subject to the, we didn't make us, I just made where I came down on the water line. Does everyone else have anything else on that?
I mean, I'm kind of mixed. I mean, I understand the looping. In water quality. But with, there's already five dead ends. Just in that, um, South Peak development right now. I, I guess I'm not. Well, convinced that, that, that.
I'm just wondering, and I wish Dave was still on there, but he said that they had done some, the town had done looping. Up at Clearbrook because there were problems up there. So.
No, Dave said that up at Clearbrook, when they built it, they had looped. Some of the lines or most of the lines, I'm not sure what, what percentage.
No, he said that he, they went up and.
No, he's, they said they went up to Hanson Farm Road was what, what he was talking about just tonight. Maybe he says something new different, but tonight. He was talking about the looping that they did a few years ago up on my street, Ron Street.
Right, oh, I thought he also was referring.
I had, I had that impression too. They did some looping post.
Yeah, they did looping up.
The, Ron, the, the town hasn't gone into Clearbrook and built water lines, have they? You would know that. You, you be, you being the homeowners association.
Okay.
Okay, the town didn't do it.
Okay, well, maybe I misunderstood what he said.
Now, the town's project was on where Ron and I live, there used to be one. Water line that went from Route three by the state barn, which is now the town barn, but still called the state barn. Um, and then it teed off and one went down to Ron's house and one went up to my house and a dead end on an EDA line. Um, our caboose was on the end, we were the end of that dead end line. Until they then looped it up in front of my house and then they looped it down by the cemetery.
Yeah, and if everybody was running sprinklers, we had low water pressure. Until they looped it, it balanced it out.
It balanced it.
Right.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I, I understand that. I understand the, the. Theory, the safety, I, I, I know that, I mean, how long were our lines dead ended since, since? Day one of the water system in Lincoln until, I was at four or five years ago?
Isn't that like two thousand five or something? It was a long.
No, 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 it was. It wasn't that long ago that they looped my end.
Oh, they, they redid my end.
They did your end first.
My end.
You're right, you're right.
Was the last.
Mine was the last. And that was like four or five years ago. But. But to say that, that the last four of those were okay at a dead end, but now you can't do this one. Just seems odd to me. Especially with this one, we're asking to loop it into what is right now in a different pressure zone. We're asking you to change the pressure zone. That it's in so that you can loop it. If it were, if it were not in a different pressure zone, I would say to do it. Because it's, again, it's better, but we're asking you to change the pressure zone. That that approved condo, you know, uh, development is in. Change the pressure zone of half of that development, right? And then loop it. I think asking you to loop it is fair. I think asking you to change the pressure zone. Is a high ask. You know, and again, if it was, if this was the first and only one, it would be different than, this is the fifth one, but we want you to change the pressure zone. Uh, it just, I don't know. It doesn't.
I agree with it. And then you're talking more PRVs too on top of changing it, right?
You're moving the big PRV, but then, yeah, you're putting in.
Then individuals.
So it's potential for a tie, I'm not going to vote. I'm not going to vote on this pattern anyway, the pressure.
Why is that?
Because if I say yes, loop it, he says yes, and we have a tie vote.
I don't know, I go along with OJ, I think, on that in the sense of. It's an awful lot to do now at this point with four other, five other ones already in play. If things are done correctly, then the water supply should be good. And. So I, I guess I would vote was just dead end.
And I, I will.
So can I just ask you to think about this for phase, whatever the next phase is? Now. I don't think you have discussed the looping in the earlier sections, and I don't know. If you weren't aware of it, or you just, you didn't think about it or whatever, but. Going forward, do they need to care about looping or not?
That's a good.
We always are going to try to loop whenever possible. If this didn't have under, this didn't have other issues here, we would loop, meaning we always do best design practice. So this is, if it wasn't for adding PRVs and moving PRVs and going through another thing and changing zones and all the costs associated from the topography of, you know, there's so many things that are out. Out of the norm with this, that's why we're asking to not loop. But we're going to be continually designing to loop where possible.
First of all, I don't think we should be asking them to do it as much as we should be asking. All developers to do it. So 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 maybe it should be in our subdivision regulations to. Loop all water systems and not have dead ends unless you apply for a waiver. Make it make it make it. Well, I think this. Doesn't, wouldn't it come up in the subdivision application?
Would, I mean, every every project is different, so to say.
Yeah, but that's why you do it with a waiver.
It's never come up as as an issue.
I don't think I've ever discussed it at a planning board.
Yeah.
It could be in the water ordinance, it could be in the subdivision.
For water, so.
Selectmen would do it. I I I'd rather see it before the planning board, to be honest. But.
Just for just.
But.
We'll have a discussion where we where it should be. We don't have to make a decision tonight.
Yeah. Does the subdivision regulations is not an ordinance? That doesn't need to be voted on at a town meeting, does it? Okay, so so when you say put it on our list for the fall, we we could do it in next month.
Yeah, we just have a public hearing on the.
I mean, public hearing, but we don't have to wait till March is what I'm saying. Okay. But now getting back to. To this and not theory in general. Yeah, I'm in I'm in agreement.
I go with a dead end.
Do you want to vote? No matter what you say, it might be a tie.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, like I said, I think we should defer to our experts. That's fine.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be, well, I didn't know how he was gonna vote, so I didn't want to vote to make a tie.
I was just sitting there thinking, how many dead end?
Right, well, actually, we didn't just, we didn't even.
Didn't even talk about it up there.
Didn't even come up.
Say this is the first time I've heard.
I mean, there's. There's there's gotta be two up there, right? And again, we're getting up the.
Talking about that.
And we're not going to get back on that one again. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So any other conditions besides the final review by the TRT team?
Yeah.
And then the bond. Criteria, all letter of credit.
Right, so review of the plan changes and easements by the TRT. Technical memorandum number five plus final review by the TRT. And then bond or letter of credit estimate to stabilize and re revegetate cap water and shorelines. And TRT to. Prove the final number presented by them.
And then. This, so Carol, do you need any? Final plans for them? Do you have?
Physically.
Yeah, I mean, obviously. Yeah, we got to go through the final review with Ray and TRT. Any final adjustments? I mean, I think we've made all the adjustments. Ray may have a couple more suggestions and tweaks we got to make. I don't know, but we'll get through that and we can provide. Okay. Electronic and final plans, and we need the MYL R two. Okay. Digitally what we prevented tonight. Okay, yep, we can give you those. Gotcha.
Okay, so is there a motion? To make that.
I'll make motion to approve with those the conditions you just discussed, you just read.
All right, is there a second? Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that carries.
Quick and easy.
Yeah. So semi base camp.
Subdivision subdivision twenty twenty four dash three map one eighteen lot thirty nine and map one twenty one lot fifty. Regulation DBA South Peak LLC, semi base campaign lots and site plan review SBR twenty twenty four dash four map one one eight lot thirty nine. And map one twenty one lot fifty, regression DBA South Peak LLC, semi base cap eight lots. Okay.
Again.
Okay, so where where are we with this one?
So what we're left with is or two things. We wanted to, I guess. I want to be careful as I'm talking about this. I know there's two separate, there's subdivision approval and then.
Right. But for the moment, let's just talk about the project in general, just to make it simple.
Thank you. Yes, that's what I wanted to see. Um, so we have a few things that we agreed on last time is we're going to remove the term ski trail from the plans. So on our final review, we would make that, we recommend that just be conditioned and it doesn't reference ski trail. That was one of the individuals that came. We had worked that out. We also were asked, we last time provided a tremendous amount of details on what's going on in the tent. As well as all everything that's happening. So we, the only plan that we were asked to provide for tonight. Was a parking breakdown that you guys could use for your records. So I can just distribute these. This was.
This is just giving you tables just to see so you guys can have. Other than that, this is a very straightforward one. We would ask that you would. Make it, we're going to. We've been focusing engineering and the red control on the project upper Crook Mountain Road. So now we have to be. Okay, pending. You know, all engineer, town engineers, would be called stormwater, all those normal things. The reason why we want to push this approval forward is from our thanks council.
We don't want to be in a situation where we're marketing something to potential buyers. It was not already well thought of from the planning board. So we understand that it might take you months to go through the engineering review back and forth before we'd have similar set of conditions that we just had as far as engineering. But we'd be able to use that and not have people say, hey, what's going on over there? We say, yep, this is what this is what we we have a clubhouse on its way.
So on the on the engineering side, so we still have outstanding, we have not responded to raise TM one yet on this. And that's mainly because we needed to understand from DES. Whether or not an alteration of terrain permit was going to be required for this because it's kind of part of a larger. Plan of development. We were, we were not clear on whether or not we were going to have to do a separate alteration of terrain permit. And meet those outstanding resource water criteria for the treatment for this. But we did finally manage to reach DES and confirm with them that we are not required to get a state alteration of terrain permit for this. So it will be just under the stormwater ordinance here. So we understand we've got to go through the technical memorandum, meet all those criteria and have Ray review it and concur.
Just looking, there's a letter from the butter here. The same, the same party, yeah.
And but a new one since the last.
I believe that's a new one, right? That came in. Because pressing concerns about the. About the drainage of the five lots.
That was a letter, I believe, we got last.
That's that's our, that's hardly been done. Okay.
Yes.
You agreed that that taking the.
Agreed to take the ski trail out and at seven seconds, we met them in sight and walked their lot with them.
Okay, and you also. Concerned about water running off from lots onto their property.
That's correct, and we expressed how that wouldn't be the case, and you can you see how there's actually a loped spot that comes through.
Okay.
So we're ready to accept the application is complete to start the sixty Friday clock.
I believe that was already.
Were you ready for that?
I think that's already been done.
Yeah, I I thought we had.
If you go back, that was two meetings ago. Yeah, I thought you already went, you already went through all of that. I thought I could be wrong, but.
Oh, yeah, it's my. Yeah.
That would have been May twenty second, right?
Yep.
We got him right here. Okay, that's.
You know, no. How busy? Who wrote that?
We didn't vote according to this. We go down to line five fifty three, we discussed the application. And then we voted to continue it to June twelfth.
But that was, that was on the site plan review.
Kind of just went through the list for the cycling review, but we didn't.
Yeah, just give me a second. Let me just look and see here for the.
It doesn't say in here that we actually voted on it.
Didn't vote on neither one.
We we kind of went over and to see what we needed.
Oh, no, no, line two ninety, right there. Vice Chair Bowden makes a motion to accept the application as complete. No.
Yeah. We didn't vote at the same meeting. Well, yes, it is because. And they're talking about sixteen yellow birch circle, which is this.
I I mean, all our notes say it was voted complete. So for what it's worth. So it's whatever you guys want to do. I'm fine. I mean, I think this is, doesn't matter if we're gonna just open it.
Well, matters for us because we have, now we've started the sixty o'clock, sixty five o'clock. For decision by accepting the applications.
Is there anything that would prevent us from making a decision tonight with with the condition of getting all the town engineering approvals and?
See how it proceeds here.
I guess what I would say is at the moment. The last two hearings we've had on this, we've, we feel that we brought everything today to make a decision as far as. Pending the engineering, we understand that that all needs to have happen. But we would be working that, that would take us time, but then when we market this to the, you know, on our website, and this is what's to come in the future years. We won't, we don't like to do that without giving the planning board the approval, getting the approval on that. So that's why we provided all the detail, two, two meetings ago, we were asked to provide a ton of things. Last meeting, we we came with an abundance of binders and. And details, and then the last piece of missing information we have in front of us was just, which was just a parking calculations to have for your records.
So I'd ask if we wanted to, oh, just.
Everything was any of the. Anything that would not be done during the engineering report, all engineering related items. We have waited on this. We've been focused on other projects with. The town. Where now, we would ask that we get conditional approval based off of meeting all the town engineering. And drainage and all the things that don't have to do with actual the function of the building. We just, I don't want to market this and put it in brochures and do things without getting approval by the planning board.
And so there's no, I mean, we're not doing plan and profile for this. It's just showing the service, it's just services. So we're just going to show the services on the plan.
We had the other things. It's, I think. It's.
It's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think if it's easier for, like. Let's just. Yeah, like I'm not, I, I really hope we're not getting up against the sixty-five day clock from.
No, we have time.
Yeah.
All right, so we're, we're, we haven't, have you had any, you haven't brought anything further for the check to review teams since last meeting?
No, nope, so we're planning on, because of the nature of the project, you know, being, we addressed all the neighbors' concerns. We have gone through, addressed all the board's concerns that we heard, the one piece of paperwork we were waiting to submit was a parking layout. Everything else has been as submitted or will be worked through with Ray and the town. TRT with all the same restrictions you'd normally place with an approval based off of now having to meet all the things like stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. Any material changes to the plans at this point, basically what we presented is what we're still proposing, the only changes would be based on whatever Ray's. Comments are, whatever his review is.
He's ready to accept. And review checklist with me.
Let's see, we, we went over the checklist last time.
We didn't vote on it.
I don't think we voted on it.
We did go through it.
We did go through it, we made a couple of changes.
Yeah.
Um, so when we accept the application, we just need to make sure we.
Make sure they noted those changes.
What the changes were that were made last time. And I don't know, no, I don't know, Carol, if you have. Those. On the application, because I, I took notes last time. Do you have a copy of the application that they submitted?
Find that part of the letter, it's actually stapled to these minutes, when I was reading the minutes, I happened to see that letter.
That's why you thought it was new.
Yeah.
You want me to just? I have the site plan review one here. If you, if you go through this. The ones where the X is in pen and circle. As opposed to the type written.
Okay.
That was a change we made.
Yep, the parking, that's.
Two and three. That was it.
Uh, the location and type of existing proposed lighting for outdoor facilities. So are you gonna provide that?
That was provided on.
It was provided.
Right, because it just was all, what was, what was already existing.
John?
Which am I?
Going through the, the list.
Yep. The location and type of all existing and proposed lighting. All out facilities.
On the building, so, yeah, I think that's what we, we discussed that, and we said, look, we're not providing a lighting plan because they're just gonna be. On the building. All downlighting on the building.
Okay, so I guess it'd be not app applicable then.
Correct.
Okay, never mind. That wasn't a change, and then. Illustration of effect on pedestrian and automotive circulation.
We, we updated that to the plan the last meeting and just had walkways demonstrated.
Okay, so that is on the plan.
Yep, walkways on the plan, and then we provided this, Mark provided, just provided the parking plan tonight, so. That's been provided.
Provided. Alright, so it's just.
Okay, so that's the site plan.
Yeah.
Um, so then the. Now get owner's name right on the plan, add. General use the district that it's in, just on the plan. Probably did that already.
But we haven't provided the plans yet, because again, we've got to get them to Ray to go through TM one first.
Okay, and I think we figured out about the lot numbering, so we're all set with that. They have certain drainage plans, you fix that, right, or you're working with Ray with that?
Ray on that, we have a drainage design to share with him, it's ready to go to answer his TM one. Um, we just, we haven't hashed through that yet, and that's why we'd ask that be kind of like we've done in the past, we just do that as a condition.
I, I think there's, you know, quite a bit of information still missing, because you know, we're supposed to have a public, public comment.
We have had public comment.
Well, yeah, but you've made added things since then.
What did?
You updated the plans, right?
And I haven't, we haven't, I mean, not, all the plans are the same, have been the last three meetings, so what we're looking for here is, the only thing we haven't dove into is all the engineering review. Because I feel like that's gonna take months, and it's, you know, there's a lot of back and forth, that, you know, we submit the plan, Ray needs time to review it, then. His response.
Hasn't had a chance to review these changes.
Changes, I guess. Yeah, the only change that there really would be, would be related to, it's a subgrade stormwater detention. Um, to detain that twenty-five year storm event, so it's buried. That's the only thing, I think, that really materially, the lot lines don't change, the building position isn't changed. The walkways, all that, nothing is changing related to any of that stuff. And that's why the only item that we were asked to provide for today, nothing has changed at all, the only thing we were asked to provide. Was just the parking calculations that we referenced. So meaning that what we're submitted today was the only difference, and these plans have not changed one bit from the initial. Meeting.
Okay.
So we're asking to approve the plans as. Uh, provided. In the event that anything were to change based off that, then we understand we would have to come back to planning board for an open. You know.
Okay. Ray, you comfortable with what's being proposed here?
In terms of.
They, they want, they want to basically, you know, asking for a conditional approval.
There's several outstanding items, there's easement items that are outstanding, there are obviously technical. Items that are outstanding with respect to stormwater, I believe, I don't have the technical memorandum in front of me, because I, I mean, it. I think we sent it back in the middle of May, so it's not fresh in my mind as we speak, um. I mean. There's quite a few items that are outstanding, I guess.
I think that if we're gonna go through. We're gonna go through a few. Back and forth, we understand that we need to get Ray's approval on this, and that we're gonna be submitting plans and making sure everything's right, and we're comfortable with. Going through that process over several months that it takes to get it right. Anything that change, we've addressed all the, we feel we have addressed all the questions that the board has had on the project. We've made it, you know, after the first hearing, we heard we needed to be extremely clear the second, the next year, last hearing, we were. We, we really stressed all the details, and then the one thing we wanted to provide that was outside of the technical review is what we brought tonight. So anything that didn't have to do with. Ray's review process, we wanted to make sure was provided. And that everything else, we'll start going through with Ray back and forth until we know that's good, until he signs off, we can't do anything. Ray, are you comfortable with that?
Um, I'm certainly comfortable with that, the question is, is the board comfortable with that, do you want to see the final product, or are you? Confident you have a. All the information necessary to. Sign off on it, I guess, I mean, I'm comfortable with the process of. We're gonna do our thing, we're gonna do, we're gonna do our technical review, and we're gonna go through, make sure it complies with. You know, town ordinances and um. And if you're comfortable putting all that responsibility in our hands, we're comfortable taking it.
And I think we only would propose this in a case like this, where the project is very simple, I mean, it's a very simple. Project here, there's not, we certainly wouldn't do that for something like the last one we just did, right? But for this one, it's so simple, we, you know, we really like to not tie up the board. With additional meetings, if, really, it's all gonna be on, you know, Ray and my team to review this, and, and basically us to respond and satisfy the comments. So Ray can confirm it, complies to all, to the, primarily the stormwater ordinance, um, so. Again, for us. Don't want to do any changes to the use, everything that the part, everything we've talked about. We have no changes, it is just as the last few meetings have been. And then that way, when we are talking to marketing and the things, we know, okay, we've got to get engineering, you know, raise approval, and. Everyone's in agreement, and if there was any changes or anything that needed to be done, we'd have to do another amendment in a new public hearing.
Really, let me ask the board this, I mean, you know, some of our comments are, I just pulled up the, the memorandum, so we have. Um, provide lighting and landscape plans, I think they addressed the lighting issue, um, but. Do, does the board want to see the landscape plans, does the board want to have a conversation around parking requirements, because that's another one of our comments?
We've done, we've done those two, landscaping and parking.
Hold on, let me finish.
So I'm just, I just, I'm just rattling off some of our.
Yeah, that was fine.
Drainage design. Easements. I think those would be the things that. As I'm going through the comments, might be. Might be of particular interest to the planning board, all the other ones are, you know, changes in notes, et cetera, et cetera, that can be easily worked out at the technical level.
So on those level, we were retaining ownership of this parcel, we're not looking to sell it, so we're not worried about easements, because we'll be owners of both, so we'll be able to work that through. As far as the landscape plan, that's where we updated the. Walkways and everything that's associated, the lighting, we had the downlighting, and we said not applicable on the building. In the parking layout, we wanted to do those calculations that were here. And then as far as building layouts and everything, and we've really. Tried to cover all those bases in previous meetings.
So can I just ask a quick question here, so the subdivision plans that were submitted included the lots across the street from the proposed nest. So is the, all right, is the planning board? Is it, is the issue in front of us that you're gonna approve the subdivision plans, or is the site plan, what, which is it?
Right, I would think we're both. Yeah, I think we're discussing both.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to go, understood what you were, what, which.
Yeah, I knew, you know, we've accepted the subdivision application is complete, and I thought we had accepted the site plan, but apparently we. Haven't. I think we'll probably do that, at least accept the site plan application tonight. And then we'll make a decision whether we're gonna go forward with approval tonight or not.
So the, just a reminder that there was, I, I believe, Carol, you can clarify this, there was, I guess, public. Comment by email regarding the subdivision plans, was there not, I think, an unbundling property owner, or is?
Yeah.
Resolved?
Yeah, we resolved that, and that was, he was present at the last hearing, so the comments were.
We're gonna open up some more public, public comment, there are members of public, yes.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, I just, just wanted to be sure.
Does anyone have any questions about the completeness of the site plan review application?
I, I do have one, at, at the last meeting, um, we had talked about the Pemmy Base Camp, and I took a whole bunch of notes. And you did a great job. Running down what's there. But, uh, it said a new plan is being submitted to the planning board, I was. From that discussion, I was under the impression that we would, we would present a plan of the current setup. Of the Pemmy Base Camp, and so, okay, this is the retail space, this is the ticket space, this is the kitchen space. We already provided, the town does have copies on that, we're happy to.
Oh, they, we do.
Yes.
And we could give you copies of that with a town stamp, we showed the board last meeting, we could, if we.
Do we have that at the last meeting?
Yeah. Oh, we can show, we can, um, I, we walked around and I showed Paul, that was.
Did you show it to us, because I, I mean, I took opious notes of what, but I didn't have a. Plan.
Well, that one that says the nest on it too.
Okay, okay, okay.
Merchandise, stage.
The other bars, tables. Okay, okay.
Uh, okay, I remember that. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm thinking that that should be submitted as part of this. Plan, because the, the question is, is that, did that ever get site plan review? Add that to this. I mean, I don't think we have to do that tonight, Carol.
Yeah.
Carol. Carol.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about it now, let's keep moving here.
We, we've all looked at that, I don't need a copy like to make the decision in the next ten minutes here, can we just, can we do that after, like? Next. Okay. Alright, then, do we want a motion to accept the?
Motion, yeah.
Accept the application as complete.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mike, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And motion carries. Right, so we have some, we have some loose ends, I think, before we can make a decision or approval.
Do we want to open public, or do you want to talk about the loose ends first?
Yeah, Ray, can you go over those loose ends again?
Uh, sure, um. On the subdivision plans, um. Uh, there's some easements, um. That need to be, I, I worked out and identified and finalized. Go through the highlights here. The, uh. I think, did you, did you, you're all, all set with lighting and landscape plans?
Yes, I think we're all set with that, anyone have any issues with that?
Nope.
Okay, um, the location of dedicated parking facilities, our comment there was just to ensure the number and size of parking spaces meet town requirements. And I think, Mark, maybe you can, maybe, maybe now's a good time to even throw, throw this out, is to, my understanding is from the master plan. Parking really is kind of a. You know, a kind of a global issue relative to the resort, you have parking lots throughout the resort, and that's how you're handling parking for this particular facility, is that correct?
That's correct, and we've now done a layout which shows sizing and spacing, it also shows like thirty in this row, thirty-eight in the next, thirty-seven. We tried to give a real detailed parking layout and gave calculations that. Allow it to say like a hundred and seventy six seats, seventy-six seats divided by four equals forty-four. Then plus forty-four spaces divided by ten, it's four point four for the employees, so forty-four spaces, plus the four point four spaces is a forty-eight point four. Then the South Peak Clubs, the first floor is eighty seats, and the second floor. Um, is three hundred, or thirty-three hundred square feet, so the eighty seats is four divided by the twenty, plus thirty-three hundred square feet divided by three hundred square feet. Which is eleven spaces, so it's thirty-one divided by ten, three point one. So twenty faces plus the eleven spaces plus the three point five spaces equals thirty-four point one spaces. Total spaces is forty-eight point four spaces plus the thirty-four point one spaces equals eighty-two point five spaces. In, or eighty-three rounding up, eighty-three spaces. And now we all have a map that'll go along with this in the. Decision.
Okay, and how, what size are these spaces?
The spaces all exceed. Meet or exceed town regulations.
And what's that square footage? Okay, that, that's okay, okay. Yep, thank you. Um.
Parking expert.
So the location, if I could just ask, so the location of these parking spaces has been identified, I'm assuming it's not next to the building, right?
That's why it's on a large map, it's showing much more spaces, but we wanted to make sure we could show what was existing. Tried these, I felt this project, we give more information than less.
I think it's a little west, this parking area is the existing parking area. It's somewhat, is it west? It's somewhat, is it west of the Pemmy Base Camp? West, south and west. Um, and this is, is, so we've always been confused here when, um, Loon comes in because this is where they say their overflow parking is. So um, how does, is there some kind of arrangement or?
Yeah, we work closely with Loon and that's why we're here tonight. When we talked at the last meeting, the first meeting, we didn't have all the answers. So this, this, this packing is on Loon's land. No, it's on, it's on. Okay. So it's on our land. So there's no issues as far, but as far as just for global perspective, the first meeting, we didn't have much information about Loon's operations. The second meeting, we realized it was of the utmost importance to have an abundance of information. So we have made sure that was clear. And the last piece of real detail, we wanted to make sure was provided because that was the only piece we were missing for tonight. Pending with that caveat being all the big items we've addressed, except for the technical end of things that we are very comfortable to work through with Ray to get all this drainage, et cetera, accomplished. That will not be influencing the, you know, building and the square footage and all those items.
So now, but the, the Loon parking, so this is, is this kind of shared parking with Loon? Is that how that works?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So you're not, these, these spaces out of the 197, you're not encumbering 83 of them between the Pemmy Base Camp and the South Peak Club. They're going to be double counted for the projects.
They can't be double counted. That's why I think you guys wanted the table, right? So I think that what we're trying to propose here is we're trying to give you guys some sort of mechanism to keep an eye on the parking. So that's how we're doing things. We have so much parking relative to what we're doing. So we want it to just be a constant moving, working with you guys. This is a very small, easy one and we're trying to set the make it so we have our kind of team working together, you know, county and South Peak.
So Jim, the, the balance of the, uh, the other, the other key component, obviously is stormwater management. Um, that's a technical item. All the other items are, you know, technical related as well in our memorandum.
Okay. All right, so any, would anyone have any questions? All right, so a motion, open public comment.
So moved second.
Second.
Mike, all in favor? Aye. Would any member of the public like to speak on this proposal? Is there anyone like to offer any comments?
Okay, so motion to close, public hearing.
Seconds. Mike, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, are we ready to make a decision? Would rather wait two weeks to have Ray look it over a little further.
But have we accepted this? Have we accepted it as complete?
We accepted it. We accepted the subdivision already as complete. Now we've accepted the site plan as complete, site plan application.
The application.
Yep.
All right.
Now we have to either decide if we're going to make approval with conditions or we're going to let Ray review it a little more.
Is it anything that Ray's going to review that, that you feel the board should weigh in on? I mean, it looks like the landscaping, the lighting, the parking, the dumpster.
I mean, um, yeah, the, so the.
All of that we've, we've talked about.
Yeah.
What, what's, what's the planning boards?
Right. What is, I mean, I don't, I don't have any issues really.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking if, if there's.
Does anyone have any?
Anyone?
Yeah. Steve, do you have anything?
Put a few conditions on it.
But is there any, I mean, other than, than?
Easements, yeah, the technical review.
Technical review, yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to
To start with the subdivision.
Accept the subdivision plan with the condition of a final review by the technical review team. Okay. And did you, you already removed that ski trail, correct? That's, that's off of the map. So I don't have to make that a condition.
Correct.
All right. Any second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, move on to the site plan approval. Is there a motion? Do we have any conditions for site plan review? Same technical review? Committee, uh, final review? Need a microphone.
Um, cause once you just use kind of the same similar conditions that you had for the 28 lot upper Crooked Mountain Road subdivision for, you know, he, you have the easements review by the TRT meeting. You, uh, Ray referenced, um, some kind of easements, a review of this final set of plans subject to the TRT with, um, with Ray and then uh, meeting the conditions of technical memorandum number one. And then is there any need for a bond or letter of credit for this?
Probably not. Relatively small. There isn't any road being built or anything.
No roads, no.
Not being sold.
Yeah, that would be it.
Yeah. And I don't even know if we need the easements to be a separate condition. The TRT team is going to look at the plans in general.
So we already voted on the subdivision, not the site plan. So I, same thing, I think.
I don't even want to make this a condition, but I just want to make sure that, that the South Peak plan is included in the, um, approval package of what we're, what we're talking about. So we're looking at, at, at all the stuff they gave us on the nest.
Make sure that's all, and we'll put it all together during the tier.
I mean, that's okay. We want a record of what's there.
Right.
Right. The inventory of what's there for the records. We're not here five years from now saying.
Absolutely. Right. We'll have a record of everything that's.
Okay, and, and, and since you're going to do this, can I, can I ask? Make one change on this plan you just gave us? And you can say no. Just write 130 seats inside and 44 seats outside on the plan. If those are the right numbers. Oh, does it?
Yeah, it says it down below.
And never mind.
I already had it done for you, OJ.
Never mind.
That was quick.
All right. Good.
Okay. Are you making that motion?
Then I'll make a motion to accept with the, um, really the condition of the TRT team review and approval of the plans.
Okay, so a second?
Second.
Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Yeah, good night.
Excuse me, Jim. Are you all set with me?
We're all set. Thank you, Ray. Thanks, Ray. Thanks.
I'll still leave you steps.
Yeah. All right. So next one is, uh, Jess Winder C, DBA JKP Properties LLC in DBA KS Market, formerly Goody's Market, current order 55 Main Street, map 112 lot 66, a former mixed-use resident, former mixed-use apartment retail facility. Okay. Is there a joke? Okay. So he's basically looking to make some, add an apartment to the building.
I haven't had a chance. I haven't bumped into him yet. So I talked with the firemaster's office and currently there's a bill on the governor's desk, House Bill 1065, which will allow, it made it through the legislature. It will allow a residential property to add four apartments without the requirement of a sprinkler system. But there's one catch to that. If it's a mixed use, meaning apartments in commercial, um, you don't get that waiver. You have to sprinkle what you're adding.
Okay, even if you put fire separation between the uses. Okay.
So Jesse will have to sprinkler that one apartment that he's adding. He won't have to sprinkle the pre-existing.
Okay. Okay, but his question is, does he have to come for site plan review, right? Get a microphone just for the.
Actually, I told him he need, he needs to come for site plan review because it's converting office space into residential space.
Yep.
Um, and site plan review requires, uh, a conversion of space like that to come before you. But he just couldn't believe it. So anyway, he asked if I would ask you if he really did need to come for site plan review. And I said, okay, I'll ask. Um, and then um, he also, uh, you know, you had told him that he needed to figure out the parking. And he does, he also doesn't really want to have a surveyor figure out what he's got there and how much space he has there for parking spaces. And he said, do I really have to do that? I said, yes. But anyway, so I said, I would ask you.
I guess, does he have enough parking for what he needs to do?
I don't know.
You don't know, he won't tell us.
I don't know. Because he's got to figure out the square footage of what he's got for retail. Um, that's open to the public because it's 300 square feet of uh, space that's open to the public. You have to have a parking space. And then you have to have two parking spaces for every apartment unit. And he said, oh, I got plenty of parking. And I said, well, you have to put it on a plan. You have to show us how many, how much room you got there and um, anyway, so I said, I'd ask you. Um, because he just couldn't believe it that he had to do that. So I'm asking.
I mean, I think there are two things he can ask. I mean, apply for waivers, site plan review. All the buddies would get noticed. I don't see why he would get it, but or he could apply for regular site plan review and ask us, you know, since it's a relatively small project, he could request waivers for parts of it.
Yeah, I think it'd be easier to apply for the actual approval than to come in and apply for a waiver of the whole thing. You still have to notify your buddies and have them have to say, just come in and do it. Now, we've looked at other plans, not from, you know, surveyor stamped um, plans, but using tax maps or whatever in measuring out the, the parking spaces and showing where they are and just number them. And in, you know, counting the square footage.
He has a, he has a good sized, uh, tax map that I printed out for him. I thought, I thought that he might be able to get his employee to help him with it. But apparently it was overwhelming. So anyway.
Yeah. I think that's the way to go, really apply for a site plan with waivers for some of the complex stuff. I mean, you probably wouldn't need a survey because the building is already there.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're, I mean, really looking at the parking is, you know, the issue I would see, no drainage.
Right. And it could be, he'll, what he said was if the, if sprinkling costs too much money, he probably won't do it. So so maybe, um, I'll give him all that information about that he would need to sprinkle that new, you know.
I mean, I think that's a good, good benefit. If he only has to sprinkle that one, one unit.
Yeah. So.
Any other, anything else on this one?
No.
It's voluntary.
Yes, we have a voluntary lot merger. Um, these are, you've known about this particular lot merger since, um,
Yeah.
Uh, what's his name took over the landing? Remember he came in and he said that he was going to combine three different, um, sets of lots and one of them was going to be a two, uh, merger of two lots. And this is that one. There was a merger of three lots, another merger of two lots, I think. And then this, this set of two lots. So I think all you need to do is there's a red.
Yep.
Your, a red folder that has the original in it and.
So if no one has any issues with the lot merger, I would take it.
And it makes, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Totally makes sense. And we know all about it already. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the voluntary lot merger of 15 and 17 Hay Hill Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any public participation? Does anyone have any other business?
Um, no, but I was thinking that we should set, um, I sent out the notices of decision for the ZBA for the appeal. Um, so I'm not sure how that'll pan out. Um, I still have to finish up the certified record. Um, but what I don't know is whether he's going to continue and go forward with um, the appeal to the Superior Court or not.
Okay.
Um, but based on the decision that the CBA made, um, you should probably, after this shakes out, um, you, we should probably set up a work, uh, you know, workshop or, I mean, a, a work meeting so that you can talk about the things that, um, the ZBA with the assistance, the ZBA was represented by Cordell Johnston, who was the municipal association attorney for 18 years and now he's on his own. And, um, you know, he had, they made a decision based on their interpretation of the ordinance, which is different than our planning, than, than our town attorney's interpretation of the ordinance.
I tend to agree with Cordell Johnson myself.
So, um, so anyway, I think we have to wait a little bit, but I'm just putting it on your radar so that we can set up a meeting and you can decide what you want to do. Do you want to change the ordinance? Do you want to just leave it as is, you know, in, in response to that um, decision? So.
All right.
Is everybody here aware of the CBA's decision?
I, I didn't, um, I didn't, I wasn't sure whether I should send it out to each of you, um, or not. I did post it and it's posted on the, on the town website. So it's, it, you can see it or I can email it to you if you want me to.
I've seen it, but I think the wording.
I've seen it.
Yeah, I think the wording of the motion by Miles, it wasn't just a yes or a no. It was, it, um, and I know he got coached by the attorney, but I thought it was well done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And basically they supported our decision for Mansion Hill. Um, now there was talk of the possibility that the applicants might come back and make some changes. Is that still a possibility or we'll just wait and see?
I can just hear say.
Uh, I don't know. No, that was, they offered that, but that was before they got the decision that confirmed the, 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 not the appellant, but the applicants. The applicants were making an offer, but I think that that was in lieu of getting a decision that benefited them. And I don't know if they still feel that way.
Okay. And that's fine.
Did the applicants have their attorney at the ZBA meeting?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Yes, they did.
All right. One other thing, if you want to shut our motion to go into non-public session, RSC 91A full and three, section 2C, that's a discussion of a matter that might affect the reputation of somebody.
Do you want to motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion to motion non-public.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'm going to pull the board. Steve, yes or no?
Yes.
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 Okay. Jess, Cal, can you shut that off?
Can we take two minutes first?
Yeah.